Good evening. Is there a motion, please, to return the regular board meeting to public session? Dr. Bieger first, thank you. Mr. Lemay second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Good evening, everyone. I call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except for Mrs. Bieger and Mr. McCaughan. Mr. Martyr, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with the review of justice.
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency, an alarm will sound and if an evacuation is necessary at this time, we ask that everyone turns our cellphones and other electronic devices to silent and also please note all emergency access. Thank you. Is there a motion, please, to approve the agenda as presented? Mrs. Vansys first, Mr. Lemay second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Seeing no opposed, motion carried unanimously. Dr. Martsloff, would you like to give us our board recognition?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. This evening, we would like to recognize Jacob Okulowicz, a North High School student in grade 12 for receiving a perfect score on his ACT exam. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Thomas, principal of North High School, to come forward and tell us more about this impressive achievement.
So, I just wanted to come up here and to help recognize Jacob here for this outstanding accomplishment of getting the perfect score on the ACT. Very huge accomplishment, very small to the students in the country. He receives such an honor. So, I have Jacob here as one of our finest students at North High School. And I just want to congratulate him on such an awesome, awesome job on this exam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any board acknowledgements?
Okay. Dr. McClary, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you may conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. We would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. Thank you for your cooperation. On our sign-in sheet, we have Sarah Ark.
Is she a student or... No. Good evening. My name is Sarah Ark. I live at 140...
Sarah, I'm sorry. Are you a student or...
Thank you for that comment. I'm a parent.
Okay. Please give us your address then.
144 Wood Acres Drive. My child goes to Maple East. He's in kindergarten, and I have two more little boys to follow after in the next couple of years. I wanted to thank you for the letter that you sent me after my concerns that I addressed last meeting. I appreciated reading through that, but there was one thing that I didn't notice in that letter that I just wanted to address again. And before I do that, I also want to say thank you to Dr. Bowen at Maple East. He's been in touch with me quite a bit about some of the changes that he's been making in the school this year and how much activity that the students are receiving in their classroom, which I think is wonderful, and hopefully the teachers do too, and hopefully they notice a good change in the students for that. Small changes can lead to, well, small steps can lead to big changes. So, my biggest concern was not meeting the Phys Ed mandate in the district. And what I did was I made some handouts. Hope that's okay. And I put a little QR code on the top, and that'll link you right to the New York State website, education website. And I also put them in here. And additional to that, I put some research articles and other articles about how physical activity can improve academics and students. So, it's not just something that I love and have a passion for. It's something that I believe is important to all students, and physical activity, something that they need to be comfortable with and understand that it's good for them and find a passion for so they can have lifetime fitness and be able to be smart wherever they continue their life after school. So, aside from that, I just want to say that increasing the Phys Ed time isn't a matter of shoving more kids in the gym. It's a matter of improving the quality of the physical education program in the district. And as you are considering staffing changes and classroom sizes, which I know is a big issue, I hope you consider your physical education staffing and consider adding to that staff and adding an additional teaching station such as an extra classroom or other creative ways to increase the minutes, which my son is receiving Phys Ed twice every five days for 40 minutes. That's 80 minutes, and he should be receiving 120 minutes a week. So, he's not coming close to the minutes and nor is he meeting the daily component there. There are districts in the area that are meeting the mandate, so maybe it would be worthwhile to reach out to other districts. I would love to sit on the committee and help that creative process if it were offered. But again, that's my input. I hope that you make some considerations, and I don't know who to give these handouts to, but hopefully there's enough for everybody. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other people signed up to address the board.
Does anyone in the audience wish to come up and speak? We still have some time. Okay. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items, seven personnel, eight business, and nine special needs and student activities as presented in the board packet? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Mr. Lemay, with a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Dr. Martsloff, would you like to introduce our newly appointed Director of Public Relations and Communications?
Thank you again, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. This time, I'd like to introduce the Board of Education in the district to our new Director of Communications, Nick Filipowski. Nick comes to us from his time at Channel 4 and prior to that, other news stations that he has worked at in Channel 7 and news stations out of town. And we really look forward to having him get started here in Williamsville as we cross into the new calendar year. So, welcome, Nick, to the Williamsville Central School District. And I'd like to invite Nick at this time to come up to the podium and say a few words.
I appreciate this. Usually, it's a little easier with a teleprompter and a red light in front of you to tell you when to talk. But Dr. Martsloff, board, it's an incredible honor and a great privilege to be able to work alongside you guys and bring the vision that Dr. Martsloff has for the Williamsville Central School District to life. I know it's a huge responsibility, one I'm really excited to get started on right away, and I'm looking forward to joining you guys in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the approval of our minutes. Item 10, is there a motion, please, to approve the November 12 regular board meeting minutes? Dr. McClary, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Vansys, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. President's report. Mr. Bornstein, do you wish to speak about the Williamsville North High School DECA Installation Dinner?
Thank you very much. Yes, this was a very exciting evening. I represented the school board at the annual DECA Installation Dinner, the North High School chapter, and I had the pleasure of sitting with Dr. Thomas. So, that was like an added pleasure for me. We caught up a bit. But this is an exceptional organization within our school district and, in fact, around the state. It's a leadership service organization where students are given the experience to prepare for future occupations and passions going forward. And there were about 200 students there, current members and future members, and the excitement was palpable, and it was really fantastic to see this kind of energy at an event. It took place at Classics 5 Banquet Hall. That's how big it was on Niagara Falls Boulevard, and it was really an exciting thing for me to witness on our behalf.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bornstein.
Yeah.
Moving on to the Erie County Association of School Boards. There was an advocacy training event that took place on November 16. Mr. Lemay and Dr. McClary attended. I can see that a report was submitted. Do either of you wish to give a report at the table in addition? Dr. McClary?
I'll just make a few quick comments, that it was a very good workshop. It gave us an opportunity to hear from people who are experienced with working with individuals who do things like lobbying and doing advocacy for schools and their policies and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McClary. The legislative meeting was held on November 21. Mr. McCaughan and Dr. McClary attended. A report was submitted. Dr. McClary, do you wish to add anything to that?
No.
Okay. Speedboarding event was held on December 5. I attended along with Mr. Lemay, Dr. McClary, and Dr. Martsloff. We attended several flash PDs rotating from room to room. Some of the topics included trauma-informed care, safety and security threat assessment, and accessing grant funds, or a few others. And in lieu of paying a $10 registration fee per person, we all donated canned goods, a bag of canned goods. So, a lot of canned good food was collected that evening. Thank you to the Erie County Association of School Boards for organizing and hosting this event, and thank you, Dr. Martsloff, for attending with us. Our upcoming delegate assembly meeting is going to take place on Thursday, January 9, and that's from 6:30 to 8:30. Mr. Lemay, will you still be attending that?
Yes, I will.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does anyone have anything else to report under Erie County Association of School Boards? Great. So, let's see, where are we? Moving on to the New York State School Board Association. Oh, no, this one, right? Legislative breakfast? Okay. So, we will be hosting a legislative breakfast that's going to be taking place on Saturday, January 25. Our district hosted this last year, and we will be doing this again in cooperation with the Erie County Association of School Boards. It's going to take place at Williamsville High School and, oh, sorry, Williamsville East High School, and registration begins at 8:30. There will be a breakfast from 9 to 9:45, and the program will conclude at 11:30. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that? Dr. McClary, I don't know if I can answer them. We'll try.
I was just going to add that this breakfast is open to community members, staff, board members, and we really hope that a lot of individuals from our district would like to come and hear what our legislators have to say and ask them some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have any questions about that, you can always call our district clerk to get more information. Does anyone have anything to report under New York State School Board Association? This past Friday, December 6, the board visited Transit Middle School. I attended with Mr. Lemay, Dr. Vernader, Mr. Meyer, and Dr. Martsloff was there as well. Thank you, Mrs. Carey, for organizing and setting up our breakfast. We visited with many staff members and enjoyed breakfast in the library, and then we took a tour of the building. Thank you to Mr. Wall for taking us on the tour and for answering all of our questions along the way. Our next board visit will be on Monday, December 16, and we are going to be visiting North High School at 7:00 AM, and then we'll swing over to AIM at 8:00 AM. I plan to attend with Mr. Lemay, Dr. McClary, Mrs. Bieger, Mrs. Vansys was a maybe. Are there any confirmations? Okay, awesome. Mrs. Vansys says a yes. Anyone else from the board think they can attend our breakfast at North, our visit at North on Monday? Okay, thank you. We will be having an education, Board of Education retreat, and that's going to take place on Saturday, January 11. It's going to be here in District Office from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. As of our last meeting, eight out of nine of us were able to commit to attending. Are there any changes to attendance for this meeting? Okay, thank you. I did speak with the NISP facilitator by phone last week in preparation for the January retreat, which will be an opportunity to review board operating principles and procedures. I have asked Mrs. Carey, our district clerk, to also participate in this retreat. Thank you, Mrs. Carey. Strategic planning will be held on Thursday, December 12. Dr. Martsloff, do you want to say anything about strategic planning yet?
The only thing I'll add is we did a survey with our non-instructional staff members, including clerical folks, teacher aides, buildings and grounds and custodial, other support staff positions, to survey them and get their feedback as we look to provide this data to the core team that's meeting all day this coming Thursday, where we plan to begin crafting some strategic intents. So, we really look forward to the progress we're going to make this coming week.
Mr. Lemay?
Are we at the end of surveys, per se, or are there more still coming?
There could be more on the road if the group decides so, but I think as of right now, we have a good amount of baseline data.
Thank you. Item 12 is our superintendent's report. Dr. Martsloff, would you like to give our community update?
Yes, I'd like to start off and share with the Board of Education that after the December break, we will have two new school resource officers joining us in the district. One of the resource officers will be at North High School and the other one at South with Officer Edwards, our current SRO, who will be assigned to East High School. They will also work with all the schools in each high school's particular feeder pattern so that they're able to work in some of our middle schools and elementary schools as well, but they will mainly be stationed at the high schools. I also just want to share that I enjoyed the opportunity recently at Erie 1 Bocis to take part in speedboarding with Mr. Lemay, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, and Dr. McClary. I think it was a good opportunity to hear about some of the things that are going on across Western New York and some of the services and opportunities that are available to help school districts be as successful as they can be. And lastly, as this is the last meeting of the calendar year, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martsloff. Our next item is our policies, new and revised policies. Would someone like to make a motion to take the new policies, 7440, and revised policies, 6110, 7134, 7222, and 8470, from the table? Dr. McClary, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Any discussion on taking them from the table? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Would someone like to please make a motion for the second reading and adoption of the new policy, 7440, student voter registration and preregistration, and revised policies, 6110, code of ethics for board members and all district personnel, 7134, student attendance areas, 7222, diploma or credential options for students with disabilities, and 8470, home instruction, homeschooling, as presented? Mrs. Vansys, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Any discussion on taking them from the table? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Would someone like to please make a motion for the second reading and adoption of the new policy, 7440, student voter registration and preregistration, and revised policies, 6110, code of ethics for board members and all district personnel, 7134, student attendance areas, 7222, diploma or credential options for students with disabilities, and 8470, home instruction, homeschooling, as presented? Mrs. Vansys, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there any discussion on any of these policies? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Dr. Martsloff, would you like to give us our report on staffing and class size?
Thank you again, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. This time, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Dr. John McKenna, who will briefly summarize some of the information in the report for the board, and then we'll be happy to take questions from board. Dr. McKenna?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Martsloff. I just tell you, I got a chance to look through this report. I'm sure you saw there's enormous amount of data and information that is contained in this report. It always has been a quite lengthy report, but one of the things that we did this year too, I don't know if you noticed from last year, is we added some new information to the report. We've added some new columns to hopefully give some more comprehensive information and detail to the board regarding the class sizes. Some of the things we added, and then you could see, especially with the high school and the middle school, number of total sections, the number of students in each under and over class. Last year, the number of students in those classes was not included, and we put that in the report this year. The total students enrolled, that was not part of the report in the past, and we put that in this year, as well as the class averages in the middle school and high schools. We made sure that we gave you a little more information based on feedback that we got last year, hopefully to make this report a little more comprehensive. It is pretty comprehensive in and of itself. This document is really the foundation that we use when we do our staffing in February and March. So, this is really step one for our staffing procedures for next year. When we get together, really, this is the analysis. This is probably the building blocks of where we start. So, what I'm going to do now is I'm not going to go over every column with you because that would take all night long. What I'll try to do is summarize what I think is some of the basic information that's probably some of the most important for us this evening. If you take a look at the elementary, for example, you can see that the total sections is 164. I don't know if you can, is there a way to, how do you do a little dot there, Tom? I don't know if you can see that or, well, anyways, that's okay. 164 total sections, 157 of them are within the guidelines. Four are under the guidelines and three are under the guidelines, four are over the guidelines. What that really means in a nutshell is 95.7% of the classes are within the guidelines, 2.4% are under, and 1.8% or three classes were over the guidelines. So, overall, and if you can see, the three classes that are over are at Maple East, Dodge, and Heim, and each of those, when we had consultation and discussion with the principals, one of the main issues that happened there is there was an increase in ENL students. These are ENL classrooms. So, what we did, and this really helps inform us for next year, so, for example, when we do staffing next year at the elementary level, we already know that what we need to look at is how we staff our ENL classrooms. It's very important. So, this year, what we did is when we started, we all started within the guidelines, and we got an influx of students that we just weren't anticipating. But now, next year, given this data, we now can anticipate that, and we can plan accordingly. In the meantime, what we can do with classes that are the three that are over is we work with the principals, and if they need additional aid support, we do that. Most of these classrooms already have additional adults in there who are serving the ENL students and students who are in the classroom because there's students sometimes with special needs that have, need additional help from various adults. But what we did do is we did talk with the principals, and we are willing to give additional help and support with those classrooms based on our dialogue with the principal. But that's why this report is so important too, because it definitely helps us with future decisions as we move forward. But that's elementary in a nutshell. The middle school now, as you can see, if you turn the next page, I don't know if you can turn that to the next one. I'm hoping we can see the middle school 5 and 6. Okay, thank you, Tom. Now, overall, with the middle school, if you do a quick overview, it's 495 sections. Over the guidelines are 19 or 3.8%, and under the guidelines is 234, which is 47%. That's pretty interesting when you take a look at that. So, right off the bat, you can see that many of our classes are under the guidelines. One of the things that jumps out at me too, and I looked at the data, was there's no class averages that are above 29 in grades 5 and 6. None of the averages go above the district guidelines. And the average below 25 is in multiple classes, multiple grades. So, for example, grade 5 at Casey has averaged 23.5. Grade 6 at Casey has averaged 24.5. At Heim, grade 5, the average is 23.9. And the average grade 6 at Heim is 24.5, and the average grade 5 at Transit is 23.8. So, you can see that the average of all of the classes in grades 5 and 6 are below the guidelines, and we have none that are above the guidelines. So, that's an overview of grades 5 and 6. Moving on to now the grades 7 and 8. And those are here. It's hard to see from here. Right here at grade 7 and 8. So, in a nutshell too, with grade 7 and 8, there's a total of 605 sections. 12 are over, which is 1.9%, and 60 are under, which is approximately 10%. So, if you take a look at these numbers now, we could take a look at these at each school real quick. Casey, as you can see, that's the first one up there, right? I can't see from this angle too good. So, Casey, as you can see, has a number of sections that are over is 2, and a number of sections that are under is only 13. So, that's how Casey would add up. And then if you take a look at the next page, you can take a look at Heim. There's 176 total sections. Number of sections over 30 is 0, and the number of sections under 15 is 17. So, that would be a review quickly of Heim. Mill? Is it the next one? Is that 190? I can't see. Is that a total of 192? Okay, good. So, total sections at Mills, 192, 0 over, and 17, which are under. And Transit, which has a number of sections of 10 that are over and 13 that are under with 74 total sections reported. So, that's the middle school in a nutshell. Those are here, it's hard to see from here. Right here at grade seven and eight. So in a nutshell too, with grade seven and eight, there's a total of 605 sections, 12 are over, which is 1.9%, and 60 are under, which is approximately 10%. So if you take a look at these numbers now, we could take a look at these at each school real quick. Casey, as you can see, that's the first one up there, right? I can't see from this angle too good. So Casey, as you can see, has a number of sections that are over is two, and a number of sections that are under is only 13. So that's how Casey would add up. And then if you take a look at the next page, you can take a look at Heim, there's 176 total sections, number of sections over 30 is zero, and the number of sections under 15 is 17. So that would be a review quickly of Heim. Mill? Is it the next one? Is that 190? I can't see, is that a total of 192? Okay, good. So total sections at Mills, 192, zero over, and 17 which are under. And Transit, which has a number of sections of 10 that are over, and 13 that are under with 74 total sections reported. So that's the middle school in a nutshell. Moving on to the high school, it gets a little complicated at the high school, and there's a lot of various, as I said, if you go through these, I'm sure you have questions about many of the various individual courses that are in the high school. And a lot of what happens at the high school is really, there's a lot of scheduling implications that come up. There's a lot of combination classes, that classes have to be combined. There's also some sequence classes, high-level sequences. So sometimes there's things that are, there's three different courses in a sequence, and sometimes you want the kids to get the whole sequence. Some of the last legs in those sequences have lower numbers in them. Some of them are electives in the high school that are just really excellent enriching courses that our kids get to take, that a lot of kids are just very interested in. And I think it's one of the things that makes Williamsville, the fact that we have, when you look at some of the courses that are on this list that other districts don't offer their students, it's something that's very special. I look at courses like the Supa courses through Syracuse University. It's an amazing program for our kids. Project Lead the Way is also another with the University of Rochester, just incredible opportunities for our kids. The internship that our kids get to do, we have Mandarin now, which is amazing offering that we're giving to our students, and the work-based learning that we do where our kids actually get to go out in the community. So some of the class sizes are lower by design because that's the way some of these classes have got to run. And with the Supa classes and Project Lead the Way classes, there are limits to how many kids are in those classes. So they come across sometimes as looking lower, but they're that way by design. But overall, the high school, there's a total of 397 sections that were reported, 43 were over, which is 10.8%, and 142 which were under, which is a total of 35.8%. If you take a quick look at the next page, we're looking right now at East, and they have a total of sections of 122. They have three that are over, and 48 that are under the guidelines. Moving on to the next school, which is North, if you just want to take a quick look at the summary for them, 140 total sections, 29 over, 43 are under. Moving on to South, and in South too, when you look at some of, if you might have some questions about some of the numbers on South, and there's some combined classes in there, especially with the French classes, if there's any questions, I could try to answer those for you. But some of those are, they're combined, and they're combined so that they can keep the classes going. Some of them are specialty classes like, you know, Spanish 3R. If we didn't combine them with the other classes, they would be too low to run. So creatively, we've been able to combine classes to make sure that kids continue to get, those are the third leg in sometimes those sequences that we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that kids get those experiences and don't miss out on the sequence. So with South, if you take a look at the summary for South, 135 total sections, 11 are over, and 51 which were under. Overall, when you take a look at the numbers, again, if you look through them, there's, every number has a story to tell, if you take a look at these numbers. And I've had a chance myself and all the assistant superintendents, Dr. Baylen, Mr. Scanzuza, we met with the principals about these numbers, and we've had a lot of good dialogue and discussion about these classes and these courses. I can tell you that the principals have worked hard to put together schedules in their schools that really are in the best interest of students. They want to make sure that their kids get every opportunity that they can to get all the offerings available to them. And if you take a look at again at some of these classes, when you go through this very extensive list that I just gave you, there are things that you will see being offered in our schools that just are not in other schools. So I think it's something to be proud of too. But it certainly, as you look at that, there certainly gives us a lot of information to look at as we do our staffing. Maybe there's some areas we can look at as we use this report where we can look at and say, can we trim some areas maybe going forward? We'll have to work with the principals on that. Maybe there's some areas we need to increase staffing in certain places. So a lot of dialogue comes from this report. This really is just step one in the staffing for next year. So I hope that this gave you a good look at a lot of classes, there's a lot of information here. If you have any questions, I'm sure you do, I'd be happy to do the best I can to answer them now, and if we don't have the information on a particular class, we certainly can get it for you because if you count all the classes in here, there's probably just hundreds of different classes that are in this report. But I give, as I say, the principals a great deal of credit for doing a lot of different combinations to make it work for their kids.
Thank you very much, Ms. McKenna, for the work on this report. I have a few questions. I'm going to let my board members go first, and I think we'll just start at one end and go down.
Sure.
I have a feeling this might take a little bit of time, so thank you for your patience. Mr. Borenstein?
Thank you. And thanks, Dr. McKenna. This is really important for us to know and to hear about. Could you tell me why it's important to track class size averages?
Well, I think it's important to look at the overall class size because that goes into the load also. And when we do our staffing in the spring, we want to make sure that everybody's load is basically the same. So we have to look at averages. And yeah, sometimes that can be a little confusing, especially if sometimes if classes get up around 30 and some are down around 15, there is some disparity there. But one of the things we do look at at staffing is load, and we want to make sure that each teacher has basically the same load. So that piece of data helps us with that.
Okay, thank you. So it gets tracked because there's variations and variables during the year that go up and down and up and down?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
And there's times we might have to add staff, or, you know, sometimes trim staff. But usually during the year, there's been times we've had to add certain staff, depending on numbers too. Sometimes there's increases, and there's things that happen sometimes, and sometimes there's influx of students that come within the school year that we weren't planning for. So that helps us to make staffing decisions.
So the averages are helpful for the future, not necessarily for the moment? Is that an accurate assessment?
I'd say it's more, not exactly. I would say that they do help us now, because if we do have to make, staffing is an ongoing kind of moving target. And if things change now, and we have to make decisions now, we would use that data now. So I would say that it helps us now, and it helps us when we do our staffing, the full staffing complement that we do in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lemay?
Dr. McKenna, thank you so much for putting this report together. Bit of information here that you mentioned that I don't think I realized when I was looking this over, and I spent several hours studying this report this weekend, so thank you. You made mention that the, like, for example, Spanish 2A and Spanish 3R, if I see those combined on the spreadsheet, and I see five students in it, or sections under five, I should assume that that's part of a combined class?
Yes, if you're looking at South High School right now, yes, those are combined classes. So like, for example, which one were you looking at, French 3A and French COP?
That could be one, we could look at French 1R, French 2R, where it shows eight students in one, seven students in another.
Right. And that really is one, that's one class of 15 students, and there's eight, one, eight in French 1R and two in French 2, seven in French 2R, so that's a combination class.
I see. So then how would we know, like, if you look at Spanish 2A and 3R, just a couple fields down?
Yep.
How would we interpret what the class size actually is there?
Yeah, and that is an interesting, I can see where you'd be confused with that. So what that really is, is when you see the, for example, in the number of students in each under-over class where it says 10, 5, 10, 5, and 6, those are all student, those are all the Spanish 3R students in all five of those classes. That's what that means right there. And so that's one of those things, Spanish 3R, those numbers are very low. Had we not combined them with Spanish 2A, would have been very difficult to run that. That's why we combine those classes.
Okay, yeah, now I know I asked a similar question to that last year, so I guess the report's just becoming a hybrid to try and to reflect that data, so thank you. Couple of questions I did have. Some assumptions I made, but I just want to make sure that my assumptions are correct. I was looking at the three high schools for Mandarin, and I show, like, for example, at East High School, two sections with only a total of 11 enrolled, and I see similar both at South and at North as well. I'm assuming because we had difficulties in the beginning obtaining an instructor for that, that we had a lot of dropouts and students just went elsewhere, chose other curriculums, so next year, we should hopefully see these be better numbers?
They will be better next year. That's exactly what happened. We did have a difficulty securing a teacher, but it was worth the wait, and I would imagine that those numbers will go up. We've already getting good feedback about the Mandarin classes and about the quality of the teaching that's going on there, so we're really looking forward to those numbers going up. We think it's a great opportunity for our kids, and we have had a lot of good feedback about the class.
I kind of guess, so I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing those numbers next year. I made some summaries, and I did this last year too, to kind of point out some things. In the middle school, and I arbitrarily picked low and high numbers, I looked for high numbers, averages of 30 or more, and I arbitrarily picked 10, or I should say, nine or less is an arbitrary number, and I kind of went with that number to kind of use some of what you had already said. You had mentioned that, you know, we do offer classes, they're typically going to have lower enrollments because we're looking to, you know, and I won't rebash what you said. In the middle school, I saw, you know, nine classes with less than nine students, there was 11. In the middle school, I counted 15 that were over 30 students. And what kind of jumped out at me looking at that number was 10 of those 15 actually came from Transit Middle. And to dig further into that number, I discovered that seven of them came from French and Spanish. So I was a little concerned there that class sizes at Transit Middle for our foreign languages might be a little unbearable. I kind of use that as an open edit, and I don't mean to me that a leaning or leading question, but a question mark, because I know certainly when we were visiting Transit last week, we had the foreign language teachers that were showing us some concerns with their class sizes. Looking at the high school, nine classes or less, and this is going to be skewed because it doesn't represent the combined classes here, so I apologize. I counted 43 classes. Classes with 30 or more students in the high school, I counted 33. Did I say 43 for nine or less? Yeah, 43 for nine or less, 30 plus, I counted 33. And what jumped out at me there was 26 were in physical ed, of which 23 of those all came from North High School, who even has one class of 40. So again, I look at these from class sizes, and not pointing fingers, not making accusations at all, I'm asking more generically of, because we're moving into the budgetary season here, do we have an action item at the board here that we have to work on? Do we have, is it just simply an allocation? Do we have to work better to find more funds for more teachers? What do we have to do to keep those classes down? And the classes that are nine and under, especially in the high school level, at 43 is, I wouldn't say alarming, but certainly embraces a flag. And I bring back the same ideas that I brought back last year of saying, you know, do we want to offer classes every other year? Do we want to look at distant learning? And I know that's maybe not as much of a popular process for some of our staff, but where we can combine classes between the high schools and do video conferencing and have a teacher roam between them, that sort of stuff. Because the colleges are having good success with that sort of stuff, so I'm just open to ideas and suggestions as to what we can do, especially going into the budget season here, as to what needs to be done to help with this.
Well, I think as we go through the staffing process, that will work itself out too. But I think right now, I think, like, for example, looking at, you said Transit Middle, I believe it was some of the load classes you were talking about?
Correct, seven in between French and Spanish.
The 32 and the 31, right? Those classes right there. So, you know, one of the things that we have to look at there too is looking for qualified, you know, French people too. And I think that right now, that's been an issue, trying to find, you know, qualified foreign language teachers to a certain extent. But I know that from talking to Mr. Wall, I know he felt that these were doable right now, and he felt that, you know, given the level of the students and the expertise of the teachers, I know he felt that right now, these are manageable numbers. But that's why we go back together, and we know this is a snapshot that we use, we go back to the table in just a month or two, and if we need additional staffing, that's, we'll definitely bring it forward at that time. Or if we need to cut staffing, we can bring it forward at that time. But I think it really comes down to the dialogue and discussion that we have to have, you know, with the principals at that time, and they'll bring all their enrollment with them, and then what we'll do is, that's when we'll look at the loads, like I mentioned before, and we try to, that's where the averages become important. And then we really do a diagnostic look at the schedule. We look at each of the schools, we look at the enrollment, we look at the number of staff members, and we make decisions that we feel are within these guidelines. We try to get the schools to start anyways within guidelines, and then things happen too. Kids change. You'd be surprised how a schedule that gets done at the end of June changes by September because lots of kids change their minds, and there's kids that come and go. So there's a lot of things that happen to schedules after they get made as well. But it's definitely something we monitor and look at all the time. But you make good points, and these are definitely things that we will have more discussion with the principals about. But I, on my sheets, I circled those exact same ones that you did, and because they do pop out. There's definitely things that stare at you, that say, you know, we need to look at this more closely as a district, and that's why we go through this process. And the good thing we do is we start early now. We get a real good jump on it with this type of a report, and we've already started to have discussions with the principals in our grade level meetings with Dr. Baylen, and we've already, how can I say it, we're already bridging these gaps right now, which is a good thing. But you bring up an excellent point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vansys, do you have any comments, questions?
I just have one question. So we've already acknowledged that overall as a whole, it looks great, that we're staying, our average numbers look pretty good, but we've already deciphered that we have some below 15 and some above our guidelines. So my question really is, how can we ensure or better balance that we are having appropriate class sizes for both instructional purposes and to help maintain social emotional supports for the students?
I think that that's an ongoing question, and I think that those are the things that we definitely keep in close contact with our principals to make sure that if they need more support, we try to make sure we give them that support. I think, are you looking at other types of staffing, like what, social workers, counselors, and those types of things?
No, kind of what Mr. Lemay just brought up, not even, when I look at the high school particularly, I'm going to say North, I notice that there is a fundamentals of algebra, two classes, class size of six and a class size of 12. Perhaps we don't need to have two classes of fundamentals of algebra, one class of 18, I think is absolutely doable. Now you have freed up a teacher for supports, that they could be utilized to support students in a different area, whether it's the AIS. With that, also the pre-calculus class. There's a class size of 10 and a class size of 13 for a pre-cal class that is the non-regents class, usually your senior year, perhaps that could be manageable at 23. And then again, you're freeing up a teacher to help with a class that's maybe at 28 or so. So I'm looking at more in-house of being creative, and I know it's a challenge, I realize that, but sometimes we really need to make our decisions based on student need and not teacher comfort. They're used to having two classes, they like to teach the two classes, and we really put our focus back on what are the needs of the students.
I can tell you from talking with the principals that they do make their schedule on the needs of students. Sometimes I know that there's combinations that have to be done, and there's sequences of classes that need to get done. I know that when they sit down to make their schedules, it is not about teacher comforts. It is definitely what's in the best interest of students. And I think that sometimes it's just a complicated process, they're trying to make things fit and trying to make things combine with other things and trying to meet student needs. So I think that sometimes when you see some of those low classes too, it's probably, it could be that those students, and I'd have to look at the classes and talk to the principals, but it could be that maybe there's students that need extra help and support in those classes, or maybe there's just, it's the end of a sequence with some of those classes, and maybe there's just a small number of students that would be eligible to take that class, but so instead of dropping the class, we give those students that opportunity to continue their sequence. So there's a lot of factors that go into scheduling. But I can tell you unequivocally from talking with the principals that those schedules are absolutely made in the best interest of students, and it's really never And it's really never come up anything about, you know, the comforts of teachers and things like that. And I'm sure that the staff would probably say too that they're there, you know, number one, to help those kids and make sure that they get the best education possible. And there's just, sometimes there's going to be anomalies in schedules sometimes that happen when you're scheduling, I mean, just hundreds of classes that they have to schedule. It's not a perfect process. And I know they do the very, the very best they can to do what's right by kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Larry, do you have any questions or comments?
The few that I had kind of were answered through those discussions earlier, so I'm good.
Thank you.
Meyer? Dr. Venator?
Just echo, I had some of the same questions that Mr. Lemay had. Thank you again for this detailed report. I guess the larger question that goes outside this report is just the overall energy around the topic of class sizes in the district. I think we've heard a lot from the community over the past two board meetings, as well as our recent community forum on November 2nd. I think a lot of interesting points were raised at these forums on both sides of the table. You know, for me, what struck me was a lot of the information that was presented to us at the last boarding meeting during open session with evidence talking about the impact of smaller, not smallest, but some ideal class size range and its potential positive impact, not only on academic performance, but the health and social well-being and wellness of our students. So, I think what I'd just like to have us consider is that as we look at these numbers and we consider the information that's been shared with us, and we do even our own internal research into what is ideal from a, you know, a gold standard standpoint, we just keep that in mind as we move forward and look to make sure we're doing the best that we can for the students of this district.
I concur.
I just have a couple of quick questions. Is this, are all the numbers in this report based on best data, or is this as of today?
These, this report was moving right up until the day that it got submitted. And that is the truth. And probably if you look today, there might be some numbers that are off by, you know, a student or two because this is truly a fluid document. And numbers change every single day. So, I can't remember, what was it last, I think it was last Monday that we submitted the report? That they were accurate as of last Monday, but things do change and sometimes rapidly in schools.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to finish mine, hang on. Regarding ENL, and Dr. Baylen, you might want to jump in on this. My understanding is that in the elementary schools, and I think the middle schools as well, I'm not sure, that there's sort of like one designated classroom per grade or perhaps per team where sort of all of the ENL students are put in. Is that accurate or am I off?
It's close to accurate. I think it really depends on their numbers. We have some schools that have significant populations of students who have language needs. So, there is a deliberate effort to cluster when possible. That's the most effective strategy in terms of the co-teaching piece. Because what the New York State requirements call for is for our English language learners across the board relative to their proficiency level, they have to have a co-taught setting. So, that requires both the general education teacher and the ESAL teacher to be co-teaching. So, there is a deliberate effort. In some cases, it may be more than one classroom. So, if you have a rather large population, it could be that more than one classroom is needed to service the needs of the students.
Thank you. The reason why I'm asking is I'm still kind of looking up at the elementary numbers because I know this is an area at a few schools where parents have consistently been coming to us with valid concerns regarding class size. And I understand that, like, for example, perhaps at Heim, that you might have students that enter and because they're in need of ENL services, they're put in a specific classroom, that perhaps another section might have lost students. Are we, and I also recall your ENL presentation recently, which was very thorough, which showed that we are providing services for ENL way above what is expected and mandated by the state. Are we, is this possibly something that can be fixed with scheduling? Is there a way of maybe thinking of it differently instead of putting all, putting a majority of children together when it's applicable to do that? Because I know that there's some, you know, having a background with language acquisition, there's some disadvantages to the students to having everyone who's not, who is limited English proficient to be together in one room like that. So, I'm wondering if, are there talks behind the scenes on your end in terms of how scheduling could perhaps be done differently in the future?
So, to answer your question, we, to go back to your comment about the state education piece, in this regard, actually, it's a very simplistic chart that the state puts out relative to the student's level of performance. That tells us what it is that they should have in terms of the instructional requirements. As I mentioned, all of our students, all of our Ls get the co-talk piece. In addition, the students who are Ls, who are at the lowest two levels of proficiency are also required to have what's called a standalone piece. So, they have an additional component of instruction that is required of them. Each and every year, there's actually quite an extensive process that is used by myself, Mrs. Greco, and the building principals to look at not just their number of Ls, but the levels of need. Schedules are a big piece of it. Frankly, when schedules are built, one of the core components is you, one of the best practices is to start with the required components first. So, special education and language needs are two such areas on which schedules should first and foremost consider because those are the pieces that our students have to have. As far as our staffing adjustments are made, actually with ENL, we've made several even during the school year because we do have students who are coming in. We also have students who are exiting. So, it's very important to continue to monitor all of that movement because our movement isn't just, as summer is ending and this school is starting. So, whenever we need to, and very often it can be done with existing staff depending on, in some cases, when we have, for example, a part-time staff member, additional services can be added and accomplished with the staff members we currently have, but that is not always possible. One of the other components that we've also seen play into this is we do have students who are both Ls and students with disabilities, which means they have to have the required components of both of those programs, which adds yet another scheduling piece. But we actually sit down, myself and Karen and the principal, and go through all of that information. And there's a very thorough analysis of what the students' needs are, what classrooms have been identified, and really looking at the current level of support that the school is receiving and whether or not that is sufficient to meet the needs of the students. But that schedule does become an essential and critical part of how services are rendered because there also has to be an efficiency in how people are working. So, if there is too wide of a spread, you really don't want someone to have to go to multiple classrooms and therefore they're also not meeting the minutes that are required for the instructional component for the student. So, it really becomes quite involved when you look at all of those pieces. But we do that on, not just an annual basis, but an ongoing basis. So, it is not unusual for us to get an email or a phone call from building principal saying, I have this student who's just come to us. As you all know, there is a process by which, a mandated process by which we have to follow for new registrants to the district. And part of that is for ENL programming. So, there, we're on a timeline, we're on certainly a very structured approach, and that's really something we do ongoing. So, I'm pretty pleased to report, I don't feel like there's any lacking or delay. We'd always like to do more. I think when we look at student needs, I know one of the questions that always comes up is can we go over and above? If we do that, we have over five hundred students at this point who are on that continuum of needing language needs. So, we have to assure equity for our students. So, right now, we are meeting all of the required components and we will continue to do everything in making sure that schedules and assignments and all of those pieces align as best possible.
Thank you. Jumping back up to middle school, high school, looking at the high school and thinking about scheduling, and I'm not sure who wants to answer this. When students go for scheduling, is there priority given to the upperclassmen? Like, do the seniors do their schedules first? Like, I was thinking how they do in college, like, the upperclassmen go first? Or is it just all getting entered at the same time? Like, how is that happening? And the reason why I'm asking this is, we do have a number of classes that are fifteen or fewer students. And that's sort of been a repeating thing from year to year. And I think it's just like no action has been taken because that's a difficult thing to sort of rock that boat. And I understand that we want to keep some of those because some kids have sequences that they need to meet. I think that's very important. And we don't want to deny students the super opportunities. I mean, my daughter graduated with eighteen credits. She's a semester hot. Like, that's unheard of in other districts. So, I think that that's really worth preserving. But I'm also wondering, going back to scheduling, is it possible that if we sort of looked at the way classes are scheduled and maybe let those juniors who are going to be seniors do their schedules first, would that perhaps, I'm like looking in both directions there, give us sort of an opportunity to say, let's put a number at when we're going to close a class? And I know that hasn't happened, but that might be a conversation. We've had a lot of requests for the board this year for budget. And we're hearing about state aid being very low. And I know it's preliminary, but we might be at a turning point here where in order to make some changes with class side guidelines, we also have to do some things with, looking at perhaps if a class has twelve kids on it, perhaps we don't run it. Perhaps we run it every other year. So, I'm sort of brainstorming, but also really seeking your input. Because I understand that we're the board, but I don't feel that just because we're the board that we should make those decisions in a vacuum. I really believe in decision-making being shared and having all input. And so, I know my question just went on forever. But if you have any feedback on any of, I don't even know anymore. If any feedback on any of what I just said or spoke to, I'd be very willing to hear it. Because I am concerned with the high number of classes.
And Madam President, can I, would I, you mind if I add it on to your question? Just one?
No, maybe you might be further.
I follow your flow. Do we use any electronic software to help us with the scheduling?
Oh goodness, hang on.
Okay.
Let's do this part first. Looking at classes that are below the fifteen enrollment, like, we've got some pretty small classes. I get some of them are combined, but I'm also really a little skeptical about how you're running two classes in one room in some of these. Because I was a teacher, so kidder, kidder. And so, I just want to know, like, with scheduling, is that being discussed? Is there preference given to the upperclassmen when they go to schedule so that if we had to run elective every other year, if it's got a history of low enrollment, that those students would still be able to benefit from whatever sequence or trying to achieve or whatever credit for college that they're trying to achieve? Very large loaded question. Who wants to be brave?
I could try to address some of the concerns. And just going back to what Mrs. Vansley said regarding the twelve and thirteen with the pre-cal courses. And I will tell you that when you run a singleton class in a schedule, and a singleton means it's the only time it's going to be offered in a nine-period day, some of the kids that want to take it can't because of the other offerings potentially, Harkness kids, who are going to be gone four periods in the morning. If it runs first period, twelve out of the thirteen kids aren't going to be able to access the opportunity to have math exposure for a fourth year. And so, that's why you run another section because it just doesn't fit to have one singleton class running in the schedule and have all twenty-three kids, their schedules fit into that. So, some kids are going to get bounced out. And that's why, you know, you have an option, you have a possibility of having two sections running and they look, and the averages are averages, but you know, when you put them in there, do you think that if you have third, you're going to get two classes of fifteen? That doesn't happen either. You might get a class of ten and twenty based on some of the other courses that the kids are enrolled in that are singletons. And music being a major component of classes that kids get put in first because there's, they're offered typically in the morning. And, you know, there's a high number of kids that are in there. So, we try to get them scheduled first. So, that's the, that's the issue with running multiple sections of classes because you will have phone calls from kids who want to take a challenge themselves in a fourth year of math, and then they can't get in because their schedule only doesn't allow it because it's running one period of the day when they may not even be in the building. So, that's one of the components with having one class run as a singleton and not having multiple offers throughout the course of the day. The other issue is, we do run classes on a bi-annual basis, and that's dependent upon, I know that a lot of the social studies electives run every other year, and it gives kids the opportunity to kind of plan. And our kids do plan as to, you know, courses that they want to take and free up time in their schedule to be able to take courses they have interest in. They do register upcoming seniors first. And obviously, they want to make sure that the kids have all their graduation requirements fulfilled in allowing them to not be credit deficient or have something happen where they couldn't get into a class because it wasn't running and they needed it for graduation. So, those are, you know, those are things that we're all taking a look at from a guidance perspective. And when they do, they do schedule, they do start with the upcoming seniors and then juniors and then sophomores. And then they do the incoming eighth graders would be freshmen. So, that's kind of the way the counselors work the scheduling piece in that manner.
And colleges get locked out of classes all the time when they go to enroll and register. Like, it happens all the time where you have to have like a Plan B, a Plan C, and a Plan D because by the time you, I know they opened registration at like midnight sometimes. And, you know, that's insanely late, but that's how they do it. And within a few minutes, it's, your term is up because they've let the, they've let the upperclassmen already enroll, they let the athletes already register. So, by the time the second semester freshmen are trying to enroll, half their courses are already closed. And that's a college that you're paying tuition for. So, I'm just asking us to start thinking about it a little bit differently. Mr. Warman's going to come up and speak.
No, I was just going to answer a couple things. You know, you sit in the back and you're like, what's happening?
No, please.
I think part of the difficulty is how we schedule, I think, is probably different than how you're thinking we schedule. So, when we talk about something like, we always run two classes of a section, we don't ever do that. So, we don't, when we go into scheduling, there's no preconceived idea of how many class, sections of a class are going to run. So, we actually bring a total number of students who have signed up. So, whether a senior signs up first or last really makes no difference at all. It's how many kids have signed up for a certain section of a class. So, I could have forty kids sign up for a class. That class could be made up of freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. What I'm going to do then is I'm going to look at those forty kids and we're going to make a determination on sections based off the number of kids who have signed up for a class. I can tell you that one of the things that we all do, so one of the other pieces we'll do on top of the fifteen and thirty reports, I actually have a report that I use. So, I will look at the number of kids who signed up in March and then the number of kids who are actually in the class still in December. Now, keep in mind that the number of kids who signed up may not be the number of kids who actually start the class because of scheduling and how the scheduling process works. So, I keep a one-year average. So, I look at the number of drops, what I call drops. Now, even my teachers talk about it. They traditionally think of a drop as when a student comes in and says, I'm dropping your class. That's not the number that we use. What we actually use is the number of kids who have actually signed up for the class in March to the December after. So, there could actually be kids who have dropped, in my words, not the teacher's words, who never even entered the class in the teacher's minds because they weren't there in September. But it's a more accurate number because we section, we actually create our staffing based on the number in March. So, it's a more accurate number. So, I keep a one-year average and a three-year average of drop adds. So, one of the things we do try to actually incorporate into things is if we have a class that tends to have a high number of drops. So, for instance, if I have a class that averages nine drops over a three-year period, as I'm talking to my teachers and they have thirty and, you know, thirty-one kids who signed up, I would often say, well, that's going to be one section because what I'm going to anticipate is a number of drops here that are actually going to happen. It is a little bit predictive. The other issue that we have is, we're taking the The other issue that we have is we're taking the number of kids who have signed up for courses, and then now you're actually trying to put them into a schedule. So just as an example, at South High School, I had fifty-two singleton courses last year that we offered. It is the blessing and the curse of Williamsville. We have fifty-two courses that are run one time a day. I have nine periods in my day. Those fifty-two courses are really what make Williamsville, Williamsville. They're all those extra courses, they're those high-end courses, they're the specialty courses. They are what separate, it's the courses where that my kids who go to a tiny little school kind of out in the country will never have the opportunity to take. However, when you have fifty-two singletons and you have students trying to sign up for singletons, plus, you know, bunches of other things, harkness or whatever else it is, you're inevitably going to, what's going to end up happening is those students are going to have some classes that just don't fit their schedule. So the numbers we sign up with, we might have sixteen or seventeen who signed up for the course. We say that's above fifteen, we're going to try to run that. Typically, we might, you know, we'll look at that number, what if that course usually only drops one, but that year that course may run up against something else and we may get four. And so we're going to end up with a number under fifteen at times for those courses. I think if you look at, like for instance, and I'll use Souths as an example, and I know South, and I always advocate for South because one of the things I always say is, keep in mind that we keep a static number for the courses. So fifteen is how many you run a course. North is more likely to run a singleton course at fifteen than South is. I have nine hundred kids in my building, North has twelve hundred and fifty. They're more likely to get above fifteen than I am on a singleton course, singleton to singleton. But one of the things that happens, I think if you really looked at those numbers, what you'd find is there's a lot of singleton courses that end up in that number. That is because they do fight each other a little bit in the master schedule. On top of that, and I, you know, I would say that, I'm not going to take up much more time here, there's a ton of other things that can factor in. So for instance, you talked about the one course that was thirteen and ten. One of the things that might have happened, if that's a co-talk course and you have special ed, more special ed students than twelve, that automatically has to be split because you can't have more than twelve in that class. And we do get classes like that. I'll have a, I'll have a class, like a fundamentals, a fundamentals of math class, which is our, you know, our first year class, and we might end up with fourteen special ed kids and three regular ed kids who initially sign up. That has to be two classes even though there's only seventeen kids signed up for the course. Or else we can't, we can't run it. So we would actually split that course and now you're looking at it. Now normally, those numbers will pick up or change a little bit during the course of time. So with all of those courses, and I would say, I mean, I think, I'll volunteer Brian and Andre too. I mean, we'd be happy to sit down and kind of go through it, but it is a little different than college. And I think that's, that's part of the difficulty. I will tell you that that's a frustration for us at times too because we do staff based on student request, not on what we, you know, not on the normal thing. That is very different than what most districts do. It also can be one of those things where we're telling them, like every time you guys make a change, it actually throws our numbers off. And so we do end up in situations even in school where we say, hey, these courses are closed out after we've staffed and we'll have students who want to drop in or do something and we actually can't move them anywhere after that. But it does make it difficult.
Quick, quick follow-up.
Sure, yeah.
For those singleton courses, at what point during that process is a teacher actually being assigned to the course? Is it when, when the students pick it or when he actually finds out?
So what happens is, so the students will pick it, we'll go in and do our staffing numbers, and then we actually start to create the master schedule at that point. So you're creating the master schedule based on that? Our goal when we create the master schedule is to, and it's a ton of work trying to move classes around to figure out, our goal is to get the highest percentage of students who get all the classes they want. Usually, it's going to end up somewhere in that like eighty-seven to ninety percent range. So ninety percent of the classes will be classes that those students have chosen and they're all the classes that they have chosen. I would actually say that the kids who probably have the most difficulty are the seniors because they often are now into certain AP courses and certain other things. At South, we had an issue a few years ago where our AP Calculus, we had two sections of AP Calculus, one ran first period and I think one ran third period, and it just so happened that our two big musical groups also ran those two periods. So we had four kids, you know, it was best for most of the kids in the class, but those four kids who are now are heavy into music and taking both sections of music, now were kind of blocked out of that class. We ended up working it out for them and figuring out how they could do it, but it was a difficult conundrum. And when you have a lot of singletons, that is what happens. But it's in the process, so we actually go through, we then staff and then, and we get our numbers for our classes and then we actually create the master schedule from there.
And this is a manual process that you?
Nope. No, they do it through a computer, the computer system. So, so we do a lot of our numbers and stuff. I'll be honest, I'm not great on Microsoft Excel. I use my calculator a lot, even though I have Microsoft Excel in front of me. But, you know, we all track our numbers pretty heavily through the, through the course of the year. So at any given point, I could very quickly tell you, you know, any, for instance, some of my classes, and I will tell you, some of the ones, some of the ones on there are probably repeat offenders that we probably need, you know, we've, John and I have had that conversation, this is a class now that's gone a couple of years where they've dipped below fifteen, we need to probably take a look and is that a class we should be running at that point? But, but you, you do end up in that point. We do have those numbers on what their averages are for additions and drops because we will have classes too that every year, you know, we'll look at it and, you know, they might be at fifty-eight kids and you're trying to figure out whether that's two or three sections. What you're going to look at is that number of, what was the last year and then what was the three-year average? Do they add kids usually? Do they drop kids? And then you can kind of, it's an educated guess to some extent as you're going through. It's, with our numbers at high school, it's not as easy as the class size ranges twenty-two to twenty-five, and that's how we do it. We're really looking at the fluctuations as it kind of goes through. So, no, but they use, we use a computer program to do the scheduling. They used to use a board with sticky felt things, but we made them change.
Thank you, Mr. Boardman.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate your time. We'll ask you many more questions when the math presentation takes place shortly. I just want to say to the board, you know, one of the things here to consider is the number of sections that are below fifteen. If this is an area you'd like the district to take a closer look at and perhaps take a stricter approach to through the staffing process, please let me know. Just looking at this page only, for East High School, you could reduce in theory a point-six art teacher, a point-nine business teacher, a point-eight English teacher, you'd reduce a foreign language teacher, and you'd reduce a point-two math teacher, just on this page. So when you think about that from a staffing perspective, and you do that and you multiply that by the four middle schools and the rest of East High School and then add South and North to the mix, there's a potential for reducing staffing fairly significantly at the secondary level. But I don't want to go down that road and explore that with our administrators if that's not something the board would be willing to accept or entertain during the budget process. Does that make sense?
I do. I feel like that's very good information. It's good to know. I'm also thinking ahead to the budget process because that in itself sort of becomes like a whirlwind's time period. And if we have the preparation for this conversation, if we have that, if we give you that direction to go ahead and start going down that road, just as a, as a what-if, it might be beneficial so that when we do get to February, March, and we are faced with, you know, we'd like to add maybe perhaps mental health support, maybe we want to change a guideline by a number or two at elementary, that we could do this in a more budget-neutral way. Because we also hear from our constituents that they don't want their tax dollars to keep going up. And quite frankly, I don't know how much longer I can afford to live here either. So I personally would like to request that you look for that, take a look at that information. Is there, is there board, board support for Dr. Mertzloff to do that? Because I'm also just one individual. So is there board support for Dr. Mertzloff to further explore the classes that are under fifteen with his administrative team? Dr. McClary?
I was going to say maybe a combination that in hearing, for example, from Mr. Boardman, that we can't just look at a sheet and say every single spot that has less than fifteen has to be changed. But if there were a way to write up in a report about why the class is under fifteen, you know, which of, you know, is it reason A, reason B, or reason C? And then C, the ones that are reason A, we might all then say, okay, that's something that we could look at and combine and reduce. And if it's reason B, it's like, okay, those are seniors, those are the need for different sections, so we can't make those above fifteen. So I guess I'm in favor of a combination of not just an automatic fifteen and under, it's done, but to analyze that.
Well, why don't we go into the staffing projections report? And then we'll see where that conversation brings us.
Okay. Dr. McKenna?
Yes, the staffing projection report is really, this is a, it's like a thirty-thousand-foot look at, at the numbers. And if you take a look at that report, it's, it really is based on the enrollment report that we got last month from Dr. Grossman. And what we do is we look at the data that he presents, we look at what we have in our own WITS data, and then what we try to do is just make some projections and what we think could be logical projections based on those numbers. And again, these are definitely, you know, from thirty thousand feet. If you take a look at the overall numbers, really what it shows is that at the elementary, it would be increasing by a hundred and thirty students. So you really could look at an increase of four teachers at the elementary level. And specifically, Forest looks like could be gaining about thirty students and Maple East and Maple West approximately sixty-five each. So that's just what the preliminary data shows based on, on the projection report that we have. So based on an increase of a hundred and thirty students, you could maybe project that there could be a plus-four at the, at the elementary level. Now, if you look at the middle school level, they're dropping sixty-nine students. So if you apply the same logic, then you could maybe cut two students or two teachers at the middle school level. And at the high school, they're dropping forty-two students. So you really could, if you look at just some of the drop of forty-two students, you could, you could lose a teacher based on that. So if you look at adding four at the elementary, a plus-two at the middle school, and a plus-one at the high school, that would come up as an overall view of plus-one if you looked at it. And that goes along with the report that we had last month too. If you remember, Dr. Grossman said the enrollment is basically stable. And there's some variations at the different levels, but overall, there's a lot of stability. And that's what you see with this, with this report. But again, this report is that it's like a thirty-thousand-foot look at it, it's just basic overall numbers. As you can see, when you see the detail, when you start diving into the classes and you start diving into the levels, it's much more complicated than, than just this. But this is important too. It's important to get the overall snapshot, and then what you have to do is you need to drill down from that point. So this is really the starting point with the overall. This is really, this is where we start to drill down into the individual courses and to see which ones are low, which ones are high. And then we really, when we get into our staffing meetings, that's when we have some real in-depth, meaningful discussions about, you know, our teaching staff and are there areas that you can cut? Are there areas we need more, more staff? And then we come down to some of the things that Mr. Boardman said too. I'm glad you got a chance to listen to him because you can see the passion that our principals bring to the table. And we have meetings with them and Dr. Baylen and Mr. Scanzuza will verify, they fight for their kids, they fight for their classes. And when he said, you know, this is what makes Williamsville, Williamsville, our principals will say that, and they fight for making their schools the best that they possibly can be. So there's a lot of passion that I know we all appreciate. So thank you, Mr. Boardman, and all the principals for fighting for the best for our kids. But that's what this report is overall. And, and I think that all the conversation we had tonight is, you know, we take it, everything that you said, everything that you brought to our attention, we will, we will get to the table and we will have in-depth, in-depth discussions about all of these classes and what we feel is the most appropriate staff to move forward. It's, it's not an easy process, it's, it's complicated, but we really do use all the data to the best of our ability to make the best decisions we can. And I'll tell you, what guides the decision is truly what's in the best interest of students. That has been the guiding force in all the decisions, not just at the high school level, but I can tell you the middle school teacher, principals fight just as hard and the elementary principals fight just as hard as well. So.
Thank you, Dr. McKenna.
You're welcome.
If anyone from the board have any questions or comments regarding the staff projections report, we can start, well, I guess we'll start with Mr. Lannigan, he has his hand up.
Again, thank you, Dr. McKenna and for putting this together. And I agree with your sentiment and, you know, the passion of all the principals and all that stuff, you know, here at the board, and I, I hope that it never comes across to the community that we are ever being negative. We get passionate here at the board level, asking for information from both sides so that we can better understand a story. But when we go out into the community, I think it's, we're, and I'm speaking for myself, but I believe every board member here, we're just as passionate as, as you are and, and the administration is. So thank you. Very simple question, I realize this report's thirty-thousand-foot view, but I was a little confused here at the end where it talks about the unallocated positions to meet unprojected needs, district-wide suggestion of hiring six full-time employees, but then at the end of the report, it's saying that we really only need one. And again, it goes along with what you were just summarizing on here. So if I read into this correctly, at the thirty-thousand-foot view, should I be thinking seven full-time employees need to be hired by next year?
No. What that is, this is, that's just a basic, we put a budget allotment in, Mr. Maturski does, I think, basically every year, that we put six positions into the budget just in case. So that's, that's built into the budget process. So no, that's, that's a good question though. But that's, that's what that, what that means is there's six in there just in case we need some help and support along the way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this report or presentation? Okay. Moving on to finance, Dr. Mertzloff, budget development, long-range plan.
Thank you again, Mrs. Olivero. This time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Maturski, who's going to share some of our information in regards to our budget development and our long-range plan going forward. Mr. Maturski?
Thank you, Dr. Mertzloff. This is the next phase of our preparation for developing the 2020-21 budget. And it summarizes the detailed report that was part of your board information tonight. I'm beginning with some information that I know the board is aware of, but I like to present it for the benefit of our community. And these three items, I think, are one of the key items that drive our budget development process. First, we are required to have a balanced budget by New York State law. In other words, the revenues must equal the expenditures. Each year, our budget, school budgets must be approved by the Board of Education initially in a proposition and then presented to our community. As we know, that's different than what happens with the state budget, that happens with the county budget, and that happens with our village and town budgets where the elected officials are the ones that can approve those budgets. And lastly, we have to follow all the applicable state laws when it comes to notification, providing information to our community through mailings and other type of information. It includes our tax cap, it includes public notices, budget notices that provide the differences between our budget increases, our tax levy increases, and information on our reserves. And we're required by law to advertise in our local newspapers when our budget votes are occurring. Continuing with these facts, I wanted to then switch gears a bit to information about our revenue and the tax cap. Tax cap is normally, when you hear it in our community, people say, oh, it's a two-percent tax cap. The reality is, the way the law is written, there is no real limit to what you can raise by your tax levy. What you do have as a limit is if you go over what the calculated tax rate is of each year, you need to get a supermajority approval, which is sixty percent of your community vote. And districts who have a defeat in the first time have an ability to go back out with one additional vote. But if that vote is not successful, you're required by law to go with a zero-percent tax levy increase in your next budget year. So I, I've provided this information. This chart, I think, highlights what we've done over the last four years when it comes to our budget increase, when it comes to what we received in levy and state aid together, what our tax cap looked like, and then again, lastly, it shows the state aid as individuals. And I think it's interesting because it shows a number of items. First of all, if you look at that trend line, which is our linear increase for budgets, it's pretty much at that trend line, which is our linear increase for budgets, it's pretty much the same. And that shows how we've really pretty much held the line on trying to make our budget increases to be as consistent and as straightforward and limited in many ways each year. What you do see changing significantly is state aid. You can see that going back to sixteen-seventeen. That was the year we received our GEA amounts in state aid. So that's why it's a large increase. But what's transpired in the next three years is really the reality that we continue to face. And that was a decrease in seventeen-eighteen, somewhat of a decent increase in eighteen-nineteen, but then a very minimal increase in this current year. The other thing I'll just point out on this chart is that every year, we've been under the tax cap. We've been close to the cap, but we've been under the cap. So we've done that right for our community. So then, moving to the forecast, and I'm starting with the increases in revenue and state aid. And so what I wanted to just highlight here is that I'm looking at, in this forecast, showing information that helps us look at the future and how compounding affects our budgets. So for state aid, I went back to the two percent number, and that represents about six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars per year. Although our enrollment in the latest projection report has shown some increases, if there are trended decreases, that would affect our categorical aid. So that's our textbook aid, that's aids for library materials, computer software, they would actually go down, because it's based on our enrollment numbers. Sales tax is a difficult number to predict, so there's no increase projected there. And the tax levy is projected at two-point-two-five percent in this forecast. And so why is it above two? Because we have assessment growth in our total assessments from Clarence Amherst that really drives that up. And again, those numbers are provided to us by the New York State Department of Finance. Lastly, I have a slight showing of reductions for reserves and fund balance, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we proceed here. So our human resources is really the majority of our budget, and you'll see that, again, shown visually on the next slide. But what I'm basing this forecast on is the increases per negotiated agreements, New York state retirement system, what's maybe happening with those rate changes, health insurance, and workers' comp. I just want to highlight that those items are self-insured by our district, so they're based on actual claims that happen in a given year. Social security payments, every year that our salary total amounts go up, that amount will go up, because it's based on the gross salary figures, and those rates will climb, as well as the expenses. And lastly, the staffing items, which are items we, are difficult to forecast, and we look at it every year, retirements, instructional program changes, and any other employee positions that are added. So you've seen this in the past. This shows you a fourteen-year look at what has transpired in our district when it comes to our human resources salary and benefits budget. And the key item here is that, first of all, it represented about seventy-eight percent back in oh-six-seven, and seventy-six-point-three-zero percent in the current year. And so we all know, that's the majority piece of our budget, and that's the piece we have to manage. As a result of that, if you look at what's transpired, again, you see a shift from having our benefit expenses take up a little larger amount of the percentage, but not that significant. Change in total was one-point-six-nine percent, if you look at it as a percent change over the entire budget over that period of time. And the other thing I just want to point out here is that you had a higher enrollment at the very beginning of this process. So some of those reductions are done by the fact that we've lost some instructional staff due to the enrollment changes. So on the forecast, on the expense side, you'll see that if you look at the detailed pages in the report, the increase ranges from two-seven-five down to two-point-two-five. What does that mean? It means that the two-point-seven-five is based upon current contracts that we have now, that are presently in place. And two-point-two-five, at the end of the forecast, we'd have to be negotiating new contracts. So I've projected that to be a little bit lower, based upon what would be a trending economic forecast. Teacher and employee retirement systems, no increase or decreases right now. Health insurance, the increases are four percent, six percent, six percent, and eight percent. And that was provided to me by our health insurance consultant. Again, we're self-insured there, so that's our best estimate based upon what we're seeing today. Utilities, we're stable at this point. And again, so no increase in the forecast, no increase for facilities on any items. And just noting that our repair reserve really helps our district out tremendously, as we do work that's approved by the board every March. And then transportation, that rate increase has been, is really based on the New York State Education Department CPI rate that they provide to us. And it's at two-hundred-thousand dollars, but it doesn't, it doesn't recognize increases in fuel or anything such as changed runs, or additional runs that may happen in a given year. So this is a brief summary of the detail that is shown in my report. The top end shows really the summary between the budget and the revenue, the expense, what we have as a shortfall in a given year, what type of forecasted balanced budget would be, and then what that increase would be. And the bottom just highlights the revenues, and where the major revenues are coming from. So as you can see, this is just to keep things as they are, no increases or decreases with some of those projections I made. And I think that the key item, I would like to say here, is it's a conservative estimate that shows increases, and it shows the compounding effect. But it also, if you see, we're under two percent every year on the budget increase, and that's just for those items that I mentioned with those increases. If you had a higher increase for salary in a given year, if you had a higher increase due to some other positional additions, those increases will go up. But if you look at it, like the first year, the two-point-five million decrease, we would look at our normal ways, just as you saw in that one chart I showed. There is, in every single budget, we come up with decreases and reductions. And so those are not that unattainable in this format throughout the course of the future forecast. So what are the factors affecting the future? This was taken out of the Poststar, and it was from their editorial board dated July nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And it referenced a controller's report, and it states, the controller's report says, state spending is projected to increase at an average of four-point-one percent a year from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three, while revenues are projected to increase at three percent. Budget shortfalls of three-point-nine billion in twenty-one, growing to four-point-seven billion in twenty-three are predicted, and that is only if the state personal income tax rate continues to grow at five-point-two percent. Now, an update to that, whether it's not as based in this, but I saw this past week that the state is looking at a six-point-one billion dollar deficit for next year. So again, there's a lot of unknowns. It doesn't mean that it will happen. The state has come forward and found ways to support school budgets in the past, but it is something that we have to be aware of when we're putting together our budget. And then the last item I have on here, and I think it's been discussed at this board table in the past, from your New York state updates, is that there's been a lot of discussion concerning whether or not the state should look at reformulating or replacing the foundation aid formula. Whether that would happen with the current economic situation is unknown, but if it does happen, it could benefit us, it could also hurt us. So again, it's things that we don't know, but we have to consider when we do our budget. So the long-range planning goals of this report is really, we want to make sure that we're always being aware of how revenue increases affect future budgets, and the same thing, how expense increases affect them. So if you think you're going to have a shortfall in revenue, we have to be aware of that. And again, the compounding effect of certain items when you're adding in budget process is what we will be considering in the future. Appropriated reserves and balances can be used to offset deficit situations, and we do have them budgeted in our revenue budget. I have been decreasing them, as you have seen in the last few years, slightly. And I would suggest we continue to do that, because if it comes to a point in time where you really need to use those dollars, you want to lessen the impact of a shortfall in the future. So that's the benefit of that strategy. Awareness that of the impact, what we've been discussing on human resources, of future labor negotiations, and how that impacts the budget and the long-range planning. And of course, we all are dealing with changing New York state laws, and how it affects our budgets with unfunded mandates. Those are things that happen. Sometimes, it's not necessarily an expenditure, but it's a use of staff time. All of those things, though, do have some impact in when we look at the following year. So as we look at the next steps, in December, we're going to be working with our building administrators, receiving their budget requests, and we're going to be putting together some information for some initial budget items for the January board meeting. It's anticipated then that we'll receive information from the governor in January, and that information can be prepared and ready for probably the February meeting. And then the district begins developing our BOSI's budget in January. And then the tax cap calculation, we should have more information to provide some estimates in February. So that's the ongoing process at this point in time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
Very brief, very, just clarification. You talked about the health insurance increase initially at four percent, six percent, six percent, eight percent. Can you explain what those four numbers actually mean? Are those yearly increases, or what do they?
They are yearly increases.
Okay, so that's a four-year projection?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maturzky. It's a lot of information, and I know it's getting late, and we still have one more presentation. But I just want to say, I appreciate, like, all of the slides in between all the numbers, because you really do a nice job of really explaining things, and I need that. So I do go back in between and really reference that. So I appreciate your thoroughness.
Thank you.
Right. Moving on, liaison reports. If you have any liaison reports, please send them to Mrs. Carey. The list of meeting dates are in board docs. Is there anyone that needs coverage for an event coming up? Okay. I actually had one question about liaisons on the Williamsville Education Foundation. Mr. Murray, I just want to check with you. Are you still the liaison, are you still going to be the liaison for that group?
Yeah. I had a couple court conflicts at the last meeting.
Okay. I did fill in this one, and I realized no one had answered the other two. If you just could let Mrs. Carey or myself know, we can make sure someone attends for...
Thank you.
Okay. Since our last regular board meeting, has anyone attended a school event that you wish to report on? Okay. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? Thank you. Moving on to curriculum, the council recommendations. Is there a motion, please, to resolve to approve the curriculum council recommendations as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Mrs. Bieger, second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motions carried unanimously? We will now have our final presentation for the evening, which is our secondary mathematics program. Dr. Marzloff, would you like to introduce our presenters?
Thank you again, Mrs. Leatherboro. I'm going to turn it over at this time to Dr. Baylen, who will introduce our guests who are here to present on our secondary mathematics program overview. Dr. Baylen?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Marzloff. We are thankful this evening for the opportunity to share some information with you, with me this evening. We have Dr. Chris McGinnley. He's the instructional specialist for K through twelve mathematics. We also have all three of our high school building principals here. So we will begin with Dr. McGinnley taking us through some information, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baylen, and thank you to the board for having me here tonight. As the board may know, Williamsville was rated the number-one school district for mathematics in two thousand and nineteen, for the tenth consecutive year among the ninety-six districts in Western New York. This wouldn't be possible without all the hard work of our, and dedication of the teachers. But I'd also like to recognize that our achievements could not have happened without the support of our building principals, the leadership team, especially Dr. Marzloff and Dr. Baylen, and the Board of Education, who support our program and the multiple opportunities that we provide students to be successful. Before I begin, I thought I'd share just a little bit about myself, so you get to know me. I have four amazing children who are, or will be, students in our district here. Therefore, the quality of our programs is extremely personal and important to me. I have dedicated over twenty years of my life to practicing, researching, and improving adolescent math education. I began my career as a high school math teacher, where I also served as a department chair. It was then that I became increasingly involved with our state education department, and was selected to become an advisor to the New York State Commissioner, a position that I still hold today. This opportunity has allowed me to collaborate with countless regional and national experts. My service and contributions to education led me to receive recognition from the United States Congress in two thousand and six, and I was, and I was most recently recognized as the New York State Educational Leader of the Year in two thousand and seventeen. I can generally say that I haven't worked a day in my life. It is my passion to improve mathematics education for all children, and I am lucky enough to live and work in such a great district. Tonight, my goal is threefold, is to provide you information on our secondary math program and practices, share data in the area of high school math, and use my expertise and experience to convey considerations and next steps. I would first like to begin with sharing just a few of our strengths. The first being our teachers and administrators. We have an amazing professional staff who puts students first. We also have amazing parents and a very supportive board. Our professional development opportunities are unparalleled. In a typical year, we offer about a hundred hours of math professional development, not counting outside PD opportunities, such as conferences and curriculum work that teachers attend. Our PD is coordinated by us, so it is also flexible and timely. One of the things that truly sets Williamsville apart from other districts is our curriculum coherence. We have structures in place that permit teachers to collaboratively write our curriculum. Therefore, it remains flexible and responsive to our students' needs. By having an ownership in our curriculum, we focus on teaching students to think and reason, not just teach to attest. It also allows us to develop common assessments and use consistent scoring structures. We have a range of student opportunities that are not just for failing students. While our math supports may vary by school, they include opportunities such as academic study halls with math teachers, to tutoring by teachers and students in the libraries, as well as before and after-school AIS, before and after-school help, AIS, and scheduled exam reviews. Our summer school program is not just remedial. We offer new courses in the summer, as well as conversion courses to increase student access to Regents exams. Another way that we meet student needs is by offering leveled courses, such as honors courses and courses that end in local exams. We also offer a variety of electives and partnerships. We offer three advanced placement courses, not to mention two in our AP computer science courses. We also offer two advanced studies courses through Niagara University, as well as four computer science courses. Another partnership that we have maintained for about forty years now is with the University of Buffalo's Gifted Math Program. We have about a hundred students in this program, and those who complete the program will graduate with twenty-two college math credits. In all, we have about seventeen college credit courses available for students just in math alone. One thing that makes Williamsville exceptional is our diverse classes with multiple levels to meet student needs. The path that the majority of students follow is the traditional path that starts with Algebra I in ninth grade, as shown here. We also have an accelerated, an honors accelerated path, where students take Algebra I in eighth grade. It's impressive to know that about thirty-five... It's impressive to know that about 35 to 50% of our students are in an accelerated path and take Algebra I in eighth grade. This means each year we have around 800 to 900 students enrolled in Algebra I. Many of these paths lead to courses where students have the opportunity to earn college credit, including courses through UB's Gifted Math Program. Over 100 Williamsville students are enrolled in this program, and they can earn 22 credits, as I mentioned. While our district recognizes that some students progress through math more quickly by offering several acceleration opportunities, there are some students who may struggle with math and need structures that provide them with additional learning time. While I do sometimes hear the courses in blue referred to as non-Regents courses, it's important to note that every single high school math course in Williamsville is a credit-bearing college preparatory course that meets New York State's mathematics requirements towards earning a Regents diploma. While we strategically remove some content in the blue courses to allow students more time to learn and master key topics, in no way are these courses remedial. It's just that the end of course measure is not a Regents exam, hence the reference of non-Regents. But they all satisfy the criteria for earning a Regents diploma. Williamsville has a longstanding philosophy that we do not teach to attest and that it's more important to provide students with experiences that provide them with a strong foundation so that they do not need to enter remedial math in college. A hallmark of our secondary sequence is that there's fluidity among these varied paths. The curved arrows highlight opportunities that students have in summer school to participate in a course that provides students with additional content and preparation to take the Regents exams. Again, there are many opportunities and pathways that students can progress through mathematics. These arrows only represent some of the possibilities. Regardless of the path, we have just about 100% of our students take three years of math compared to 75% nationally. And over 80% of our students take four years of math. This is not including students that take math outside of the district, such as UB or Harkness, as compared to 15% nationally. In courses, like our Fundamentals of Algebra course, our student enrollment has steadily decreased, and we no longer have self-contained classes. At the same time that our Fundamentals of Algebra enrollment has decreased, we have created the opportunities and structures to promote a steady increase in student enrollment and retention in advanced math courses, as well as Computer Science courses over the past 12 years. In fact, Williamsville has over 100% more students enrolled in advanced math and Computer Science courses than 12 years ago, with some courses like stats increasing over 500%. Thus, not only are we getting greater numbers of students engaged in higher levels of math today than 12 years ago, we have substantially higher percentages of the entire student population taking these courses. Additionally, our students tend to perform extremely well in these courses. For example, students in our AP Math courses tend to consistently score 14 to 40% higher than the national average. As the board knows, there are two different types of diplomas. There's a Regents diploma and an advanced Regents diploma. The math criteria for earning a Regents diploma is that students must earn three math seat credits and pass one math Regents exam. The math criteria for earning an advanced Regents diploma is also that students must earn three math seat credits, but they must pass all three Regents math exams. It's noteworthy to see that Williamsville performs in line with low-need school districts, recalling that we are an average-need district. And at the same time, we consistently have more students earning advanced Regents diplomas than low-need districts. I'll briefly mention here, and I'll come back to it in the end, that from our case study research in New York State, there is a correlation between districts who offer non-Regents courses and higher advanced Regents diploma rates, as reflected in our data. I often hear that there is an impression that the state curves Regents exam grades. While it is true that students earn a raw score, the state actually scales these scores using item response theory to account for variations in question difficulty. Ultimately, item response theory is a mathematical model of how examines with different ability levels should respond to test items. So in other words, not all standards are created equal, nor are all questions created equal. A scale can account for the difficulty value of each question in the exam as a whole. So in short, a scale considers content, it uses pre-established learning standards, and considers educational objectives. This slide depicts how the state's Algebra I Regents scale shifts from administration to administration to account for changes in each exam's difficulty. Other notable exams that use scales are the SATs, the ACTs, the NAP, and the GREs, among many other standardized tests. The advantages of using a scale is that it allows us to compare the performance of examines who have taken different tests. It also allows the state to build parallel tests, test forms, item by item, as well as allow constructive response items and multiple choice items to be placed on the same scale. Whereas a curve considers all questions as equal and is typically used to achieve a certain result. Additionally, curves use percentages that are arbitrary and test-specific, and they do not consider content. Luckily, if a student would like to raise his or her grade on a Regents test, students are permitted to retake any Regents exam as many times as they wish. As you may recall from Dr. Baylen's outcomes presentation in October, she presented our passing and mastery rates for our June 2019 Regents exams. While the next six slides include the 2019 data, we typically look at these data over time in order to see trends and make comparisons. Passing rates and mastery rates are only a small fraction of the data that we examine and consider to evaluate our program, inform our curriculum, and plan professional development. I'd like to mention that the state has stopped providing the state aggregate data. Hence, you'll notice some missing state data on the next six slides. Nevertheless, using the data we have from the state, we can see that Williamsville's Common Core Algebra I passing rate is on average 34% higher than the state's passing rate. Looking at mastery rates for Common Core Algebra I Regents exam, we can see that Williamsville is on average 258% higher than the state's mastery rate. This is a similar percent above the state's mastery rate, as we observed from the former Integrated Algebra Regents exam. Williamsville's passing rate on the Common Core Geometry Regents exam, on average, is 52% higher than the state's passing rate. This is about 20% higher than on the pre-C common core geometry Regents exam. Williamsville's mastery rate for the Common Core Geometry Regents exam is approximately 250% higher than the state, whereas the pre-C common core geometry exam was about 135%. Again, we see a similar trend with our Algebra II data, the passing rate and the mastery rates. While the question comes up about the relationship between students' Regents exam scores and their marking period grades, we recognize that these are two different scoring systems, with one being a percentage and the other being a scale. Nevertheless, we look closely at this relationship. We did look closely at this relationship in 2016 and again in 2018. We conducted a full examination of marking period grades as they relate to Regents exam grades for Fundamentals of Algebra, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II Regents exams. The illustration here is an example of how our Algebra II data behaved in 2018. For example, these Algebra II Regents exam data revealed that approximately 10% of our students' Regents exam score was exactly the same as their marking period average. 55% of the students' Regents exam scores were within three points of their marking period average. 74% of the students were within five points, and 85% of the students were within seven points. In short, we found the relationship with all the exams, that they behaved similarly, which indicates that the teachers' marking period grades are fairly indicative of students' Regents exam scores. They are, however, within any dataset. There are, however, within any dataset, students who are outliers. It was also the case that students' marking period grades were slightly higher than their cumulative final average grade. This appears to be a finding that supports logic, since we would expect one's marking period grade to be slightly higher than a cumulative final exam grade, since marking period grades focus on less material and comprise daily homework and quizzes. Here's another example depicting the relationship between students' marking period grades and that of Fundamentals of Algebra final exam. We see the graph takes on the same bell curve shape and is centered a little bit right of center, which once again suggests that the students' marking period grades are slightly higher than their final exam grade. But nevertheless, the marking period grades are fairly indicative of one's final exam grade. We are consistently looking at ways to improve and enhance our students' experiences in math. In order to objectively do this, we continually analyze quantitative and qualitative data. Last year, we examined close to 50 school districts in New York State. While most of the districts were local districts, we also included all of our benchmark districts and explored the correlations between diploma rates and course structures. For as many districts as we examined, there were as many varying structures. We found, though, that districts that have non-Regents math courses tend to have higher advanced Regents diploma rates. That was something pointed out in one of the earlier slides. When we first started our research, only five of the 50 districts truly offered Regents-only courses. However, just in the past year, two of these districts have reestablished their non-Regents courses because they have found their overall diploma rates were dropping after the switch. I must also clarify that districts tend to only label courses as non-Regents if there is an associated Regents course. In other words, some districts might state that they are Regents only. Simply, they're saying that they do not have a non-Regents course that is associated with the course that ends in the Regents exam. However, this doesn't mean that they don't have alternative math electives to substitute for Geometry or Algebra II courses, such as, and I found, Survey of Mathematics, Intermediate Algebra, Applied Math, Business Math, Quantitative Reasoning, Personal Finance, Life Math, Consumer Math, Accounting, and so on and so on. Our second finding suggests that districts with higher advanced Regents diploma rates attribute their higher rates to extensive support structures in place, not only for Algebra I, but for Geometry and Algebra II and upper-level math courses. We also found that districts that eliminated non-Regents courses reported that they needed to modify and skip topics in order to accommodate the wide range of ability levels in a single class, which shifted the focus of the class to test prep. This focus on teaching at the test does not promote lasting learning, and the districts reported that students were less successful in subsequent math courses. This finding is supported by research conducted by the National Center for Analysis of Longitudinal Data in Education. Students who are even moderately performing in Algebra I were less likely to pass subsequent courses due to the progression of mathematics topics within and among courses. In 2013, the president of the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics also stated that schools do more harm than good by placing students in formal algebra courses before they're ready. On a positive note, the data suggests that districts with two-year Algebra I programs are more successful at getting struggling students through Algebra I at higher performance levels, which can contribute to higher rates of success in subsequent courses and ultimately higher Regents diploma rates. The empirical research corroborates this finding by stating that the higher one's score is in algebra, the greater likelihood a student will have success in Geometry and Algebra II. I'll share a little historical fact. In 1996, Williamsville attempted to eliminate Fundamentals of Algebra, but they quickly realized that that wasn't working, and they actually had to reestablish the course mid-year. Another interesting finding that I did not expect was that doubling up Algebra I in a single year for struggling students does not deliver better Regents results. In fact, the data shows the opposite. In addition, students who struggle through the course have a higher likelihood of failure in subsequent courses, not to mention that students are unable to learn more than one, not able to earn more than one seat credit for a course in a single year. In other words, if a student receives two periods of instruction for Algebra I per day, the most we can award this student is one seat credit. Whereas if the course is taking over two years, we can award a seat credit for each year. Earning two seat credits for Algebra I is critical for some students in their pursuit of earning their required three-seat credits in graduating with a Regents diploma. As mentioned on the previous slide, districts who eliminated a two-year Algebra I course stated that they may have oversimplified the problem and are faced with many unintended negative long-term consequences. And lastly, some districts may say that they do not have a two-year Algebra I stretch course, but in fact, they do. They have it as part of their special ed program, maybe in a self-contained setting. So some action steps that we have recently taken is that we have restructured our Algebra II and Precalculus curriculum just this past summer to allow more students access to the Algebra II Regents exam. We are more reflective on the students entering and exiting courses. The buildings are always seeking to support students in challenging themselves at the highest level. They accomplish this by providing academic study halls, math study halls or clinics. They've increased their AIS supports, and teachers continually spiral curriculum and are regularly tutoring students before, during, and after school. Summer school is one way to help lengthen the instructional period for students who struggle with math and need more time. Conversion courses are a way for students to take non-Regents courses and convert them so that they can take the associated Regents course exam. Lastly, we cannot look at our high school in isolation, but rather we need to look at our entire K-12 program. There may be additional supports needed at all levels to prevent learning gaps from beginning. We are always looking for ways to improve students' performance on state and local assessments, while our focus remains on building lasting learning. One of the next steps might be to revisit opportunities in and out of class to increase support structures at all levels. Another option might be that we continue to pay close attention to course placements as we may want to develop agreed-upon guidelines or criteria to help appropriately place students. We are continually revisiting and refining our curriculum and structures to maximize student opportunities. This is something that sets Williamsville apart from other districts. We treat our curriculum as a dynamic document because we have structures in place that allow us to bring groups of teachers together throughout the school year and in the summer to make curriculum enhancements. For example, as I mentioned before, we, this past summer, we updated our Algebra II curriculum so that the sequence of Algebra II and Precalculus now will open up opportunities for students to take the Algebra II Regents exam at the end of Precalculus. I'd like to thank the board again for inviting me here tonight and listening to this presentation. I'll also mention, if you haven't already watched the documentary about our district's math program, you can find it on YouTube by searching "A Look into Williamsville's Math Program." Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. McGinley. We are happy collectively and individually to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Baylen, and thank you, Dr. McGinley, for all of the work that went into this presentation. I will start down on my left this time and go the other way. On my left side, is there anyone that has questions or comments regarding the math presentation? Practicing good teacher wait time.
Just a quick one. Dr. McGinley, you mentioned that on one of the things, the state is no longer reporting. Why?
I don't have a reason why, but I did file a FOIL request for that data.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they've missed their deadline, so I'll try again.
Okay.
But I have no explanation why.
Dr. McGinley, you mentioned in, under the action steps, that there's increased access to Algebra II Regents exam. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Absolutely. So one thing we learned in studying the 50 different districts is we found two districts with a very unique structure. Algebra II and Precalculus, the sum of those two courses, when you look at it, the non-Regents courses, actually almost makes up the entirety of the Algebra II Regents curriculum and some, right? The Precalculus goes beyond it. So there's a district, two districts, that restructure their curriculum to give some of the missing content among those two courses, so that then we satisfy the entry criteria by state ed. So we can't just allow any student to sit for a Regents exam unless they satisfy the course requirement. So we were able to accomplish that by restructuring our curriculum in Algebra II and Precalc so that now the sum of those two courses satisfy entry to the Algebra II Regents exam, and it goes well beyond, you know, the Precalculus content goes beyond it as well. and it goes well beyond, you know, the precalculus content goes beyond it as well.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions, but I'm gonna wait and let other board members speak first, and then I'll come back at the end. On my right.
So, I'm going to tell you, I have a lot of comments and some questions. The math program at the secondary level has become, I've become very passionate about it. I have continuously heard concerns before I was even a board member. I continue to hear concerns, and I now have experienced it myself. So, I did a little background research. I called several school districts, Star Point, I, of course, teach in Lockport, Orchard Park, Clarence, to see their continuum of math. I do feel much better about understanding the non-regents. Still not really happy that those students aren't exposed to the regents examination. I would actually like to see maybe more of a co-teaching classroom where maybe it is a modified curriculum and those students actually are exposed to the regents exam. I understand that they do fundamentals, that in the second year is the stretch part where they take the algebra regents, as long as they get the algebra regents, which we know research shows, and it's actually proven, they usually do, then they're on that track of staying in the non-regents. I'm not a huge component of, once you put someone on a track, we know, research also shows, that usually you tend to stay on the track, which means that they will remain in those non-regents courses basically automatically. But I do understand the non-regents part. One question I do have is, have the math teachers at each of the high schools and across the grade levels been asked for their input and what they need to do in an effort to support the students' academic needs? And I did not hear any specifics. I hear some action steps that are very vague, and that doesn't sit well with me. I'm looking for specific things. Have they asked for labs? I don't see AIS being offered every period before school or after school. Looking at all those different potentials, further opportunities within the classroom, such as allowing test corrections, you know, all of those things. Have the math teachers in the high schools been asked directly what they feel that they need and what supports they would like to have?
Thank you, Mrs. Vansys. I'm gonna ask, actually, just so you have a comprehensive answer to your questions, the high school principals can offer some of the flavors of the discussions that have happened and some of the elements that you described.
So, obviously, it's different at each school, and I think you'll find that that's true for just about everything. So, I can tell you, from South's perspective, yes, we've asked, we've had conversations. I can tell you that, you know, they are looking, they're looking for support. We've discussed labs, we've also discussed a full-time AIS teacher as a possibility. Certainly, you know, from my perspective, those are things that I would definitely support. In regards to some of the things you said, so, in terms of extra supports that we offer, so currently, right now, as of today, at South High School, we have thirteen AIS math sections. So, I run, I have eight Algebra I AIS sections during the day. I have one geometry, and I have four Algebra II. So, I have thirteen sections of AIS actually being run, and they're every other day sections. Which, I have to say, you know, one of the reasons why we've talked about an AIS teacher is because I have nine teachers and thirteen sections being run. It's pretty overwhelming for them. In addition, we have library coverage in math, so we have pop-in. So, usually, opposite their AIS section, if they're teaching an AIS section on a day one, three, five, on days two, four, and six, the math teacher is actually in the library for pop-in help. On the opposite days when the AIS sections are being taught, we have student tutors who are there. Our math teachers are always there for extra help in the morning and afternoon, and I think that's pretty consistent, I think that's gonna be a pretty consistent thing. In terms of test corrections and some of those other things, I'll be honest, that's really a teacher decision that we leave it up. To make a blanket policy that test corrections are allowed for all things doesn't really necessarily make sense for us. That's a, that's a teacher question. I can tell you that I do have some teachers who do test corrections. I have other teachers who will allow assignments to be made up. It really depends on the class and when they're doing it for us.
So, at East High School, we currently have five sections of AIS going on right now. You know, we also get an incomplete set of data for students that are coming in, students that opt out of the New York State testing in the middle schools, and we don't have results on them. If there are one or two, we would monitor them at the beginning of the year, and they would be on our list. So, you know, without having that complete set of data, you know, sometimes we, we don't have all of the students that we need to monitor. But we do have five sections of AIS right now. We have clinics throughout the day. I can tell you, at any time you walk through the math department, at East, there's anywhere from ten to forty students. Eighth period is the quote-unquote lunch period for the East teachers, and, you know, they're all working with students throughout that entire time. And that's probably when, when it is at its heaviest. We've also have had students who have gotten a pass or walked out, you know, gotten out of class and went to the math department to ask a question as well, you know, then go back to their class. So, we do offer those supports. Most tests, speaking to the math department, most tests have the item analysis done. And then, we do spirals, the teachers do spirals. All the review sheets and the packets that the teachers hand out cover the material that the students were struggling on, so they get additional help with that. And before-school and after-school clinics with a majority of the math teachers that are there at any time. So, you know, we do offer many supports for our students. Last year, we had a team meeting with Dr. McInley. We talked a lot about the labs, and we talked about different structures that we could put in place, AIS structures. We don't use a lot of AIS, so that's where we would be different from the other schools. You know, looking at some of the research out of other schools that have math labs. You know, it's misleading, some, some, some schools have it, and the students are still struggling. With East High School, we have many students who take multiple sciences, and if we offered a lab with math classes, that would impact the science tracks for our students as well.
For North, we currently have fifteen AIS sections in our building. We also have what are called academic study halls. With the academic study halls, they're, they're smaller study halls than the typical study hall, and they're typically populated by our counselors. So, we will have students who, maybe they cannot fit AIS in their schedule, so they'll be assigned to an academic study hall with a math teacher. They're run by math teachers, so if a student who's struggling in geometry, you know, they'll be placed in an academic study hall with a math teacher, and if they have any geometry support, that's there for them. Or they can do any other work that they may wanna work on at that time period as well. We also have a peer-to-peer tutoring in our library that runs, you know, every day, throughout the day, by our students, from our top math students. We also have, you know, again, in the morning, after-school, AIS. And also, we have teachers who also come in and work with students that are non-AIS sections and just helping out their students in the morning for, you know, pre-test review, just working with students on homework assignments. You know, I walk down the halls of my building, you know, in the mornings or in the afternoons, and I see teachers working with students in my math department, so we have that as well.
Just to finalize the, the answer to the question, our journey still continues. It's far from over. What Dr. McInley referenced on the slide was not specific, so that's why I asked the principals to come up and respond. But it's an ongoing effort for all of us. You know, certainly, getting the teacher input is a, is a primary piece of it, but we've had multiple meetings here, myself and Dr. Martsloff, the building principals, and Dr. McInley. And actually, not just with high school, as Chris referenced earlier, it's really looking also at our middle school and what supports we can put in place there and looking programmatically K through twelve. So, we're looking both holistically and also what we can do at the high school level. This has become a very regular agenda item. So, the action steps that we've taken were reflected for you in the presentation, but there's more to come. So, we'll look forward to sharing that as well.
Well, I'm glad, and I'm glad there's more to come. So, I'm just gonna be really open and honest that I, I hear your supports, and I know of those supports. I don't think students are taking full advantage, whether it's fault of them or not, but for a student to have to go to academic study hall and walk there with a math teacher that they might not know, that they don't have a connection with, where they're struggling, might be difficult. Going for a peer tutor and showing up in the library and trying to find the National Honor Society student to sit with them, they might not be open to that because there's the struggling learner. Another suggestion we were given was, we have the support of Math Club. I'm a high school teacher. I'm pretty sure if a student's struggling in math, they're not going to join Math Club. That's probably one of the least things they're going to do. So, I, I still am looking for the specifics. And one thing that I have to say, as, as a board member, as an educator, and as a parent, I am concerned. I'm concerned right now with the supports for math. I do believe that we need to have a, we have to cultivate more of a growth mindset, be more positive and welcoming to all of our students, whether they are advanced or whether they are just going down the regents track. When I hear things that there are no test corrections ever, the test doesn't come back to us, where there's no learning opportunity, or there was a mass exodus from the regents to the non-regents, those are not things that sit well with me. So, I believe if we're going to talk about mindfulness and the well-being of the student, which aligns with our district goals, those are our district goals, we need to really dig deeper into this. So, with that, Dr. Martsloff, I would like to request that Dr. Baylin and Mr. McInley, along with maybe one to two math teachers from each of the high school, comes to a future board meeting, maybe February, and they are able to present specific initiatives, supports, and our program changes that will be implemented moving forward to support our students to really allow every single one of our students to reach their full potential.
Are there any further questions or comments from this side of the table? Mrs. Peter?
First of all, thank you for your presentation. It's very clear to me, looking at this presentation, that we have an incredible amount of extensions for our students who are excelling in math, and it's clear that we have a great number of, of students that do. Some clarification I'm looking for, and it's in line with those kids who are struggling, so I realize that's not all of our learners. Before the kids that do, one of the things that is a little concerning to me is, I know our three high schools are different, and we're not trying to make them look consistent. But I think we should make sure that we have consistent support so that all of our kids, regardless of which high school they're at, have equal opportunities to access support when they're struggling. Math is not my area of expertise, secondary math, so I just have a couple of little clarification questions as I was going through. I love that you've done research and looked at other districts to find what's, what's beneficial, what's working, where there are good trends, and so that idea of a two-year stretch algebra class seems like a great idea to try to keep kids on that regents pathway. How do kids and parents know from eighth grade into ninth grade that they should access that fundamentals class versus just enroll for Algebra I? Like, how, how does a student know that? Where does that recommendation come from?
Generally, it comes from the, the middle school counselors, the middle school teachers. I know that this past year, coming into this school year at East, we had, I believe, sixteen or seventeen students recommended for fundamentals. I met with the principal, Dan Wall, and Bill Bone when he was there, and we took a hard look at the students, their grades, and how they did on their tests to make sure that the students are being accurately placed in that program. And that's one of the things with the, you know, making sure that the students are at the proper level, that they, they should be. Oftentimes, we have students that override teacher recommendations. And sometimes, they do well, and sometimes, they struggle and, you know, end up going down a level, down to that regents level instead of being in the A level. But, you know, definitely, it begins at the middle school, transit middle, depending on the, the math eighth class that they're in. Some students are recommended to go on to Algebra I, and other students are recommended to go on to fundamentals. But we did take a hard look at that this year and took a look at the data that we had available to make sure that those students were accurately placed in that course. I believe we ended up taking two students and moving them into the Algebra I based on their, their grades and what they were doing down at the middle school.
Okay. When I think about initiatives and next steps, it seems to me that one of those pieces that's helpful to keep kids on this track and supporting them is for those kids that may struggle in math to offer this two-year stretch. That seems like a good idea. What I wonder about are those kids that don't do that. So, let's say they enter high school, they're in Algebra I, and they struggle. They pass, but barely, they struggle. And now, they're in their sophomore year, and they're in geometry, and they're failing. You mentioned that when they have that two-year stretch, the research shows that those kids tend to be successful and make it the whole way through. What are we doing for those kids that are failing? You mentioned different numbers of sections of AIS, but is AIS something a kid that, like, this time of year can access? Or is that something that you can only qualify for through state test scores or if you fail an exam?
Yes, but we do offer it as well for other students.
No, we put, so our AIS sections, obviously, the kids who are, have to be in it based on test scores, but in addition, we place students in who are struggling. So, our AIS acts as, as both supports for students who have to be in there due to their test scores and also students who our teachers notice are actually struggling at the time.
Is that consistent at all three schools? So, if a child is struggling right now, and they were, and we could offer AIS instead of say, you need to drop out of regents?
Yes.
So, that's excellent, and that's something that I've heard from the community that is, that is not what I've heard from community members. I haven't experienced that personally, but I have heard, I have heard feedback that families are paying for math tutors outside of school. And so, for me, I feel like with all this work we do, we wanna make sure that we have those supports. I'm glad to hear there's AIS sections, and I love the idea of clinics and before and after-school. Those are all excellent ideas. What I want to ensure as a board member is that for students that are caught in that place and are struggling, that we can consistently say at each high school that there are opportunities for AIS. And I understand scheduling, I mean, between what we saw before with scheduling, I understand that the AIS section may not work for that child, but I feel like we need to do better to ensure that when that child has that difficulty, that there is an option for every kid so that they can try to unlock that potential, and families don't feel like they need to, you know, get an outside tutor. I know that happens, but I guess that, when, when, to follow up with what Mrs. Vansys is saying, for me, I would love to see a plan in place that shows how we're doing that consistently at all three schools to meet every child's schedule, whether it be, and finding an AIS section that works before, after-school, something to show that we're supporting these kids rather than just saying, you're failing, you should drop the course.
And I would say, so, this actually probably goes back four or five years was when, traditionally in this district, and when I first got here, AIS was primarily targeted at that Algebra I, at that Algebra I class, getting kids through that. It was probably four or five years ago. I'm starting to lose track of when these things happen. We actually revised the AIS plan and made sure that a big part of it actually was being able to include AIS for geometry and Algebra II. And I think that is, that is consistent in terms of what we want and some of the supports that the, that the teachers certainly want. So, we have been able to spread it out. I would say, you know, part of the problem that comes with that is, you know, you look at, you know, a building like mine, I have nine teachers and thirteen sections of AIS. To some extent, we're probably spreading our math teachers pretty thin on, on, on offering that. If we were to truly do it and make sure it's offered every period, you're talking about much, you know, a much different level of support, which obviously, you know, we would always advocate for those things, but it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a different piece. You know, I think, I, I would say, at least from my building, and I, I think they would echo that, our math teachers are stretched pretty thin doing, doing the supports that they're doing already. You know, it, it would be incredibly uncommon for me to walk down the hall and see a math teacher in a classroom during the day and not have students in there doing some sort of work. You know, I often joke that they don't have lunch periods, they have small group, you know, study periods with kids. You know, I often joke that they don't have lunch periods, they have small group, you know, study periods with kids because the kids are always, and I think that's true. I go back to when I was teaching and I was an English teacher and we used to have, my old district, we used to have a tutoring center where there was a member of each core department sitting there. And very often I ended up leaving the room to make room for the math kids because so many kids were going in for math help and we just didn't see that in the other disciplines. So I think that's always been true, but I agree, it is, it is important, I think, for all of us and our math teachers. And I think they really work hard to try to make sure that they are doing everything they can before looking at level changes of any kind.
I love that spirit of teachers wanting to help kids. I'm not in any way saying I think teachers don't want to. I think that maybe we can do a better job of making those structures consistent across buildings but also make sure that people are getting their lunches too, because that is important as well. The last piece I just want to mention when you're looking at next steps, I have three children and I personally have had the experience with my high school student of some really excellent instructional models. One of his classes was actually a flipped classroom model, which worked really well for him. And another teacher now, you know, it's, there's really good things going on in the classroom. So as far as what's happening in those classrooms, sometimes I think classrooms are islands and people don't often work together or maybe share what's happening. So I'm curious as well if there's opportunity in the future, perhaps already happening, to look at the actual instructional model and, you know, test corrections are a piece of it, but really what are best practices happening in classrooms that are helping kids feel successful and not feel just beaten down and stuck? Are there teachers who are having higher success rates with their students? And if so, why? You know, we've talked a lot about social, emotional and is there that piece too? Like are kids feeling encouraged, like they're successful in math, or are they feeling like a failure? And I know that's very global in saying that, but I also think it's an important piece when you have kids that are struggling in a content area such as this. If you're looking at those kind of instructional practices and if there's, you're seeing greater areas of success in certain teachers, can they have opportunities to share what they're doing with their colleagues? I don't mean to in any way point fingers and say this person or that person, but there's a lot of people doing a lot of great things and if our district can do more to let teachers collaborate with each other, perhaps we'd see some uptick on those kids that are struggling as well.
We do have, sorry, I'll move on. We do have, it's nine forty. We do have a combined data team between East and North High School for our AP Calculus BC. So the teachers work together and they work on instructional strategies and talk about, you know, what they're doing in their class, so they certainly do share that. So, you know, we do have some opportunities for that that are in place right now.
Okay, thanks.
I don't know if it's for you guys, but we have common planning, so all of our math teachers are free on the same period. So our math teachers within specific classes work together all the time. I mean, they're, in many ways, they're, they're sort of lockstep. And it's a mix of, I would say it's a mix of ensuring where we are, but also they are pretty consistently sharing test data where, you know, some classes may be struggling or some classes aren't, what they need to do with it. You know, they have, they have shared tests for all the classes, they've structured it that way. So there is a lot of sharing going on. And I think, I think sometimes you're probably right that the instructional piece is sometimes harder for us. You know, you never want to be like, "Hey, I did the greatest lesson in the world." But I do think that, at least it's out there, sharing quite a bit in terms of how they do those things.
Thank you.
And one thing at North as well, we have our monthly department meetings where I meet with the math department every month. And oftentimes, Dr. McKinley is there as well, sharing ideas and different structures and resources as well.
Thank you for answering all these questions. I realize it is late, but I think all of our questions and in you being here and being so dedicated and patient in answering them speaks to just how important it is for school boards to discuss matters related to student achievement and academic achievement specifically. So I am really happy that this conversation is happening. I support Mrs. Van Sis's request to continue this conversation and dialogue. When we talk about supports, because you have it listed as an action step to actively support students in enrolling and remaining in Regents courses. There's two different things that come to mind for me. Both of them have sort of been touched upon. One of, one of those is that mind shift or my, you know, mindset of being there to support the student so that they can be successful. When we think about our own experiences in high school math courses, perhaps not some of you who are math teachers or have that, but, you know, there's a lot of, I think of those classes as being some of the more difficult courses that students are going to take during their high school experience. And even once upon a time where I was, where I sat in AP Calculus class, today, I struggled helping my seventh grader help with her algebra because it becomes one of those like lump and dump scenarios where you cram it all in, you take the test and then you've lost it, right? So I want to think about how are we providing these supports? And one of the things that I think about is grading. And I know grading also happens to be one of our goals, one of our instructional goals of the district. And we joke about how that's been, you know, a goal for the past ten years, but it really is something worth digging deeper in and addressing. Are we setting, are we establishing grading policies that are setting kids up to be successful? You know, there's a lot of different ways to grade and perhaps we don't regiment everything, but perhaps we start in, talking about some guidelines at least. Because if, if you can earn three points on a homework where the test is worth fifty points and we're grading out of the total number of points, the chances are if they're bombing a couple of tasks, regardless of how well they're doing on their homework, they're not going to do well in that class. So perhaps having some more discussions about why aren't we offering students the option to do corrections? Why isn't that more standardized across the board? Sometimes they can get a point for bringing in a box of tissues. Why not the extra points to do the corrections on the test? So that's something that I would like to have looked at further about supporting students and that mindset of every child in that class, every high school student in that class needs to feel that they can get it. You know, it's hard, it's hard, and you might have to go back and do those problems over and over and over. But to start to feel like you're never gonna get it, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy and you don't get it. And you're talked out and you drop down. So I am curious about like what the threshold is for when students are sort of counseled out or dropped down? Is it when they're failing a course or is it when their average is on the border? Or is it even like a low eighty that they're being talked down? I don't know. I hear things, but it's all hearsay? So, you know, that piece of just providing those supports and you, Dr. Markslaf, at Transit Middle the other day, you told the entire staff, "Everybody here is a mental, is a mental health provider. You know, it's really all of our jobs." Well, math is very psychological. You, you really start to feel like you either are gonna be able to do it or you feel crushed and demoralized really quickly. And I've, I've seen that in a lot of our kids. And it's disheartening. It's disheartening that they're feeling, feeling that way. When I look at these class sizes, they're fairly low for some of these courses in math. So I know that, you know, I'm looking here, Algebra II is three sections at North, it says thirteen, thirteen, thirteen. So, you know, if that's accurate, that's thirteen kids in the class, maybe I'm not understanding this. But that seems like a fairly ideal class size for an Algebra II. So it makes me wonder what's going on? Why is our mastery rate what it is, where perhaps it could be higher? The other piece is regarding scheduling, was I want to ask, because I feel like that could be part of the supports as well. And my specific question is, how is data being used to make decisions at the principal level of which teacher teaches which course?
Well, I can, I can tell you what we do. Traditionally, what I do at the end of every single year, we'll look at various data points. So we'll look at points during the year also, but at the end of every single year, we go through a full evaluation of, of data. So that includes examining Regents exam scores, it includes examining local exam scores. We will take a look, that's at the end of the year, during the year, we'll take a look at grades throughout the year at various points, just taking a look at, you know, where progress is being met. One of the things that, that Mr. McKinley has provided us over the course of the years, so, you know, if you go into my office, I have papers that don't fit in folders because they're like this wide, but it's actually tracking every single student who's gone through South over the past seven years and which courses they're in and what their scores were in each of those courses. So we did final average in Regents exam scores. And so I can actually track how many kids or which kids have gone where and how they've gone, what their pattern has been. And so we've been able to do that. I mean, we've, I've gone through and taken a look at, you know, some of the data pieces. But certainly if, and this is true in any course, it doesn't matter if it's math, science, English, social studies, it doesn't matter. If we have teachers who are showing abnormalities, and I wouldn't say necessarily one year, but certainly you're looking for patterns of, of things, those are always things that we're addressing. So in the end, you know, I as the principal am always the person who's choosing which, who is teaching which classes. But I do it, at least at South, I do it with input from the departments in terms of what they have taught previously and sort of what areas of expertise they've come, come from. Certainly one of the things you don't want to do is choose a teacher, you know, a new teacher who's come, who's never taught a course. You may not want to throw them in a course just because it's somebody different, but you're always making those decisions every single year on who's doing it. The other thing about it, and I mentioned this in terms of scheduling, remember that our schedules are built, the number of sections of courses is actually built on the number of students enrolling. And so, you know, there isn't something where this person's gonna teach, you know, five sections of geometry every single year because quite honestly, it solely depends on what we're actually offering in the course of a year. And so we don't necessarily know from year to year. You can do a little bit of predictive behavior, but we don't necessarily know every single year how many honors level, how many Regents level, whether we're gonna have non-Regents, whether we're gonna have something else. That really depends on what the signups are for that year. So it's at that point, once we know how many sections we're having, that's when we're choosing to make those decisions for who's teaching which courses.
Yeah, thank you.
I can say that at East, we're, we're the same way. We have teachers who have expertise in the AP courses and the calculus courses and we have expert, we have teachers that, you know, really enjoy the geometry. One of the things I wanted to mention is, you know, I understand what you're saying about struggling math students is, you know, I deal with one on a daily basis in second grade and trying to do second grade vertical addition now and carrying ones and twos and, you know, I see the frustration on his face and my face on a daily basis. So those are certain, certainly, you know, concerns that I feel as well. But in terms of scheduling, we're, we're very similar to the way that South does as well.
Thank you.
Same, so you're all saying that you feel as if you are closely monitoring the data and using that to drive who teaches what classes?
For all of our subjects.
For all of your subjects? And at the end of each marking period, especially like first marking period at least, are the, are the student averages being looked at in those core academic areas closely?
Yeah, at East, we, we run a grade query on WITS every week at administrative meetings along with the guidance staff. And we look to see how many students are failing at least one course at East and how many students are failing multiple courses at East. So at week five or six this year, the administrators had talked to just about every student at East that was failing a course and asking them, you know, how we could help them, how we could support them. You know, are they struggling because they don't understand the content? Are they struggling because they forgot to hand in homework? Are they struggling because, you know, they had one assignment, there was a large assignment that they missed? So we met with all the students that were failing and we continue to do that on a regular basis. We talked to the guidance department and that's when the principal's discretion for AIS, which you asked about earlier, would come into play. And then we could put students into sections of AIS if they needed that as well.
Thank you, and thank you again for your patience and taking the time. I do realize it's very late. As you see, we're passionate about our kids, but we're not just passionate about our own kids, we're passionate about everyone's children. And when we ask all these questions, I realize it can be, probably feel difficult to not feel like you're under the firing squad, but please know that they're not all just, we're not just being critical, but we're looking at continuous school improvement. What can we continually do to improve? Because we are one of the number one school districts for mathematics instruction. We see it right here and we know it, but business first doesn't always paint the full story, right? So we want to continue to keep getting better. So thank you for the work that you do and you guys get to go home, we're gonna stay a little bit longer. Dr. Markslaf's gonna ask a hundred questions first.
No, no, I just have one question and then perhaps a comment. My question is this, what would be the response from each of your math departments if you mandated that every test a student took in math had to be given back to them once it was corrected?
Don't only answer it once.
Just give it back.
Just return to the student. So I'm a math student at South, I take a math test, I hand it in, the teacher corrects it, they may go over it to some degree or not, and then the teacher keeps it most times. What would be the response from your math department, from individual teachers, if you mandated and said, "Listen, you can give any test, project, anything you want, but once it's graded, it goes back to the kid." What would be the response? Would they want to cooperate with that? Would they push back? Would they be angry? Would they be sad? Would they be happy? What would you get?
Dr. Markslaf, you're implying that that currently does not occur?
Correct.
I think we want to be careful with that because I know in most cases it does occur. I do know in some cases it doesn't.
Yeah, I would say, you know, I'd have to look at the individual test. I guess it depends, it depends on the reason they're not giving back. I can only surmise right now that probably the reason they're not giving it back if they're not doing it is test security. If they're using the tests over the course of multiple years, just like if you were in the process of, I used to assign, I was an English teacher, I used to assign essay assignments. I had to change them every single year because it's pretty easy for students to just create the data bank. You know, we all know, you know, you get into what you hear. I mean, imagine the fraternities in colleges that have, you know, the safe full of all the tests from the different, from the different people. That would be my only reason why I think they would say that. I don't know what their reaction would be. It's certainly something I'd be willing to ask my departments.
Do you think it would be a large ask?
I would think if they're, if it's not test security, I guess I would struggle to know why they're not handing it back.
Well, it is test security because I've seen where certain teachers have taken a test, crossed off, you know, December tenth, two thousand and eleven and wrote December tenth, two thousand and nineteen on the test, and it's the same test. So maybe people don't want to make changes to questions, maybe they don't want to alter it, maybe they don't want to, I don't know, I'm just guessing. But that could be a reason.
I could see them pushing back on it for that reason. Whether that's a definitive answer or not, you know, because they push back, I wouldn't say that it necessarily is. I think we would have to probably take a look as, as, you know, the administrative team and decide whether that's the best solution for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
I would say another thing too is also grading, you know. That's what I would assume is that maybe if they're, you have students who are making up the test, you know, we have students who have, you know, extended time and they take multiple days to test and they may not get it back in time, they're waiting for all tests to come in before they send them back out. So that would be my assumption as well.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see some guidelines, and not just specific to math, but across all subject areas with respect to how long a teacher, excuse me, has before they must report the grade in WITS. Because there have been situations, not currently this year, but I've seen it in past years, where all of a sudden all these grades get entered at once and it's like multiple tests. And it's like, well, I could have intervened as a parent maybe two tests ago, but they just all got entered. And it's like, well, I could have intervened as a parent, maybe two tests ago, but they just all got entered. And of course, the kid didn't tell you. So like, it's just, those are things that are worrisome. And they don't, I don't, I don't want to in all insinuate that they're happening across the board. But we do know that they happen in pockets.
And I would agree with that.
There's been no guidelines.
The only thing I would say as a former English teacher, how fast I grade something tended to be a little bit slower than how fast like a math teacher would grade something. And it, you know, wasn't a knock on either one, but if I gathered, you know, 100 essays, grading 100 essays is very different than, than grading, you know, something else. So I think we just, I always said just be, we have to be careful a little bit. But I do think what you're talking about isn't okay. Because you're right, if we're telling our, if we're telling our families that constant communication is important, and we have a teacher who, you know, a week before 10-week marking period loads 13 grades, that's a problem for us.
I think we need reasonable, rational timelines, whatever. And they might be different for English than math, or for science and social studies. And I think what happens is, Dr. McGinley pointed out, and it's right on this ending slide, about being the number one school district for mathematics instruction for 10 years, that's terrific. But I think what happens is, when a person experiences things in our district, and I don't want to paint with a broad brush, but there are certain individual math teachers that maybe don't provide the same level of communication. And I'll use the term customer service, or response time, or, or partnership with parents and students, that it leaves a very negative taste in people's mouths that conveys, we've got problems here. Even if the problems kind of get compounded and expanded upon by having discussions like this. But we can't make them better until we address those certain situations where maybe people aren't giving back the tests once they're graded at a reasonable time period. Maybe some people aren't letting kids make up tests or assignments, or whatever the case may be. Maybe things aren't going into WITS for weeks at a time. Until we begin to correct some of those things, I think that would leave a much better flavor, if you will, for our parents. And lead to higher degrees of satisfaction. So maybe that's real generalized, and it is to a degree painting with a broad brush, but it's kind of what happens. You know, when you have a math teacher that says, I'm so proud that my class average in this advanced math course is an 88, I have a problem with that as a parent, because I want my child to get into a great college. You don't get into a great college with an 88. You get into a great college with a 98, or 99, or 100. That can't be a point of pride for educators to say, look how hard we make this. We're preparing students for their future. They're going to be prepared, they're going to be ready. They're taking, you know, standardized tests, they're doing community service, they're taking hard courses, AP courses. You said 17 different courses in mathematics with college credit. They're going to be prepared, but we have to be reasonable about sort of what we expect, if that makes sense? Does that resonate with you? Does that?
Yes, we hear what you are saying. And I don't think it in any way diminishes any of the hallmarks or accomplishments of the program. As with anything, we're always looking to better meet student needs, and I think we have a collective goal and focus in, in doing that. So whatever way we can accomplish that in a better manner for more students, we absolutely want to look at that. And I think it's not just program, it's dispositions, it's attitudes, and it's also mindset, as you said. So I think all of those wrapped into one hopefully make for a great experience for all of our students. I think we have that path in front of us. And it's something I think we welcome, the opportunity to continue to focus upon and do better for our kids. So we, we will absolutely do that.
Thank you, Dr. Baylen.
I say thank you to all five of you, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Until almost.
10 o'clock, 9:59.
At night. And so we're gonna let you go home, it's curfew.
Is it 10 tomorrow we've been given?
We're gonna surprise you with a 7:00 AM board visit. Thank you again, very much. Item 17 is personnel, there are no personnel items. District facilities and support services is item 18. May I please have a motion to resolve to classify the proposed New York Power Authority Efficient Lighting Energy Project work as a type-two action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act process as presented? Mrs. Beeger first, Mr. Lemay second, is there any discussion on this?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein.
I'd like to drill down a little bit and figure out why we're not shooting to be type-one actions as opposed to a type-two actions, which has a lower standard. Can anybody address that for me?
You don't need to be, it's not about what you want to choose in this situation, what the project qualifies as according to seeker law.
Okay, so there's a standard set, so.
Correct.
Okay. That was my own question.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously onto our district safety plan in public hearing, Dr. Marzal. Oh, so I skipped one? Oh, where am I? Sorry. Is there a motion to resolve to authorize the district to enter into a customer installation agreement with the New York Power Authority for a district-wide energy savings project as presented in board docs? Mrs. Van Sis, thank you, Mr. Lemay second, is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Lemay.
Just want to thank you for a 650-page report to read this weekend.
That's okay, you're reading it during, during the Bills game.
Mr. Lemay's telling you, he's the only one that read 650 pages. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries unanimously onto our district safety plan, Dr. Marzal.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Skanzizel, we'll share a little bit of information, and we'll go forward with our district safety plan.
Thank you, I had a conversation about six weeks ago with Dennis Quazala from Everyone Bosses, who's the coordinator, who coordinates district safety plans, ours included. And as of an email that, or as a, a letter that was sent out by the state ed department on August 29th, after the fact of us adopting our district safety plan in the month of August at that board meeting, he received information on September 4th that the, the state is basically mandating that the district safety plans be placed as public access for 30 days, and that people have an opportunity, the public, to take a look at that and then have it re-upped for adoption after 30 days. So that's currently what we're doing.
Thank you, and I remember, he's not here to speak about it tonight, but I remember Mr. McCaffrey raising that issue. And so I was happy to see that there was actually a public hearing and that there's going to be that wait time, keeping in compliance with the state guidelines. Any further discussion on that?
Just a quick question. So they didn't necessarily say there was anything deficient or wrong with the plan, it was just that it needed to be public?
This was a response from, I believe, from an audit that took place regarding some of the districts and some of the deficiencies that had taken place across the state. This just basically ensures that everything is on the up and up, and our, and our, our policy has been.
That's, I assume, but, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? We will now conduct our district safety plan public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board to go to the podium and sign in, please, at this time?
I will state that no one has signed up for the speaking at the safety public hearing, but. Yeah, this is, this is specifically about the district safety plan.
Seeing no one that wants to speak on that plan, we will move on. There are no current special needs and student activities items to discuss. Does anyone have requests or matter to discuss under committee of the whole? All right, is there any correspondence anyone wants to discuss at the table? Okay. We will now conduct our second public expression, you may go ahead to the podium if you want to speak. And we can sign you in afterwards.
The same rules apply in terms of three minutes.
Okay, got it, I'll be quick, I promise, it's past my bedtime. No, I just wanted to thank all of you, and especially Dr. Marzal, on behalf of the parents at Heim. We did have a teacher that was over the guidelines in fourth grade, and some aid support was requested, and that was granted. So I'm just passing along a thank you from some of the parents that have talked to me about that. The other thing is, obviously, I've been here advocating for smaller class sizes, and it's clearly a passion of mine. But Dr. McClary, I'm glad that you brought up that we need to be careful and cautious about what we do, especially at the high school level. I think we need to make sure that we get more information about those smaller class sizes, because I'm not sure exactly what Williamsville offers, because my, my own children are very young. But being a high school teacher, I know, for example, we have Project Lead the Way, and that's pretty much a pre-engineering class, so you're not going to see a lot of kids in that class. But just like one of the principals said, this is what makes Williamsville so amazing, is that we have things like Project Lead the Way. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, you talked about Supa, I don't know what that is.
Just credit for, like through Syracuse University.
Okay.
And we have similar things like through Erie County Community College, where they can earn quite a few credits.
Right, so these all sound like very specific programs that, you know, you might not have a lot of students in. So I just, that always makes me a little nervous. Like, yes, we want to be aware of class sizes, but we don't want to make decisions that are going to change important, maybe specific programming for students. I am a special ed teacher, so I didn't hear a lot about special education in there. But obviously, the math presentation, they talked about how all of the kids, there are no self-contained math. So I think that's something that we need to be mindful of, that these special education children are probably in consultant teacher programs or classes where, again, they might need a smaller setting. So I, I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of those types of things. I know Dr. Baylen gave that report on diplomas and types and things like that. I don't recall seeing information about CDOs on there, I don't know if it was, okay. So that's also something I think we need to be aware of for those students that maybe will not be able to achieve a Regents diploma. And again, I don't know how everything works here, because my kids are young. But again, maybe there's job coaching classes or things where there's, it's not gonna look like a lot of kids. But that might be their opportunity to get a diploma, because they can't get a Regents diploma. So I think, I just want to be cautious and careful about those things. Thank you.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Kristin Kachati, 839 Robin Road.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to speak? No? Okay. So at this time, we're gonna be making a motion to go into executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the superintendent's mid-year informal evaluation? Mrs. Beeger, thank you, second, Dr. Venator, thank you. All in favor?
There a discussion?
Would you like to discuss that?
I want to make a comment. I think it's unreasonably late to go into an executive session at this hour, and I will be voting against that.
Any further discussion on that? Lemay?
Do we have more than just the superintendent's South eval? I believe we do still, so the previous agenda items from the earlier EST still apply?
Thank you, so we have a few personnel matters.
Yep.
Mid-year evaluation. Any further discussion?
I think Eric makes a good point, it is unreasonably late. But I don't know if any of the items are time-sensitive, so they may, may need us to address it.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to, to meet at another time, a more reasonable hour, but just to be fair warning how I'm gonna vote.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, I agree with you, I think it is unreasonably late.
Well, let's give, Dr. Marzal, do you feel that the personnel items are time-sensitive to us?
Yes.
They are time-sensitive, okay. All right? All in favor? Opposed? Right, motion passes 7-1. Is there a motion to return the regular board meeting to open session? Mr. Bornstein first, Mr. Lemay second. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 14th, 2020 at 7:00 PM here at district office. We wish all members of our community a joyous holiday season, take some time to visit with loved ones. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the, adjourn the regular board meeting? Dr. Venator, thank you, second, Dr. McClary, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously, happy holidays, everyone.